All right. Good evening. This is the organizational and regular meeting of the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education. Today is January 27, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Trustee Noble is not going to be here. Trustee Colan, can you please take attendance?
All board members are present except for trustee Noble.
Thank you. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight is a very special meeting as we have two new trustees and one former trustee who's been re-elected, who are starting their new term this evening. So with that in mind, Agenda Item 2A is the Oath of Office Ceremony, and I will turn that over to Martin Brook, the Bloomfield Township Clerk.
Good evening, Board and Chair and President Hill. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and at this, you know, special occasion. As you indicated, my name is Martin Brook, and I'm the elected Bloomfield Township Clerk. I'm authorized to administer oaths of office to newly elected or appointed officials and to key government positions such as police officers and so forth. As I'm starting my second four-year term, I still really enjoy this responsibility and to recognize and celebrate the community members who are entering into public service. Therefore, it is my honor to be before the Bloomfield Hills School Board of Education today on the occasion of the ceremonial swearing-in for Jason Abel, Lindsay Baker, and Michelle Southward. Thank you for agreeing to serve and to serving again. By the way, congratulations on your election. Your commitment to public service matters, and it matters a lot. Running for this office is a big decision. It is not just a personal one, but a family decision. The current board members and former board members, which includes me, understand that during your term on this board, you will spend what will feel like an infinite amount of time in innumerable meetings, during which you will be called upon to make monumental decisions that impact the current and future of Bloomfield. It's interesting, 20 years ago, I was elected to serve on the Bloomfield's Board of Education myself. I can't believe it was 20 years ago. And at that time, I didn't need to wear my cheaters, but which I do now, I realize, in looking at my notes. But looking back, they were challenging times, and today is no different. The next four years will bring challenges, and the decisions you make will be far-ranging and long-lasting. My advice, unsolicited I know, is to hone your collaboration skills and to practice the nearly lost art of compromise. By trusting each other and working as a team, this board will meet its challenges and will make the best choices. On behalf of Bloomfield Township, let me say a big thank you. We appreciate you and your willingness to make this awesome, to take on this awesome responsibility. So, well, Jason, Lindsay, and Michelle join me up here, and we'll administer the oath of office. Great. Thank you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your names.
Michelle Southward.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
and I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of board member
the duties of board member.
for the Bloomfield Hills School Board
for the Bloomfield Hills School Board.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
We'll wait till February for the board, because Carolyn's not here. We're at the end. Mark. We'll wait till February for the board, because Carolyn's not here.
[inaudible]
Okay. So now I can go pause and do some of the photos for anyone. Okay. Oh, Olivia. Oh, my God. I can't handle it. Oh. Oh, my goodness. She... Oh, my goodness.
Have you seen her?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, she's so sweet. Oh.
I'm gonna be bombing this. Karen, did you just see how many pictures she took of him?
But then I...
It makes me cry every year.
This in weddings?
This in weddings.
She's a high school...
She cares about her kids more than her husband.
Karen, we'll wait till February for the board, because Carolyn's not here. No, Karen's. So we're all set. Okay. Um, all right. That concludes Agenda Item 2A. Welcome our new trustees, and obviously welcome back Dr. Southward. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 2B, Board of Education, Election of Officers. Rebecca did include for us in our packet outline of the voting process for this. My only concern, Rebecca, is that Carolyn is not here, so I'm not sure that she can accept, if she was to be nominated, I'm not sure that she can, if we can accept on her behalf. But Tark seems to recall that last year someone was missing, and we just conveyed that the person had verbally accepted prior. Will that be acceptable, you think? Okay. All right. So I will just look for a trustee to read this item that's in your packet, going through the process for the nomination and election of board officers.
I can start. Do you have to go through this? No. I can just, never mind.
Yep, that's fine.
I think I can. Okay. I, Tark Falah, nominate Megan Hill to serve as President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. Support.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, be it therefore resolved that nominations for the Office of President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education be closed. Resolution to elect. Be it therefore resolved that Megan Hill, I almost said my maiden name. I was Megan Villaro for a moment. Be it therefore resolved that Megan Hill serve as President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. The next would be a nomination for VP.
I, Paul Colan, nominate Tark Falah to serve as Vice President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025.
All right. All right. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Yep. They're, sorry, some of this is redundant here, but be it therefore resolved that nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education be closed. All right. So the next one, this is where it threw me off, it says, "Resolution to elect vice," but we just went above. So I think we can...
So the nominations, it needs to be second. We have to make a motion and second.
But we didn't do a motion for the first one.
What's throwing me off, too?
Okay. I apologize for this. I think that we can just go through each of them, and then we'll do a roll call motion at the end.
I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Be it therefore resolved that Tark Falah serve as Vice President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. All right. Next is there, nomination for Board Secretary.
I, Michelle Southward, nominate Carolyn Noble to serve as a Secretary of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, be it therefore resolved that nominations for the Office of President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education be closed. Resolution to elect. Be it therefore resolved that Megan Hill, I almost said my maiden name. I was Megan Villaro for a moment. Be it therefore resolved that Megan Hill serve as President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. The next would be a nomination for VP.
I, Paul Colan, nominate Tark Falah to serve as Vice President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025.
All right. Are there any further nominations? Okay. Yep. There, sorry, some of this is redundant here, but be it therefore resolved that nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education be closed. All right. So the next one, this is where it threw me off, it says, "Resolution to elect vice," but we just went above. So I think we can...
So the nominations, it needs to be second. We have to make a motion and second.
But we didn't do a motion for the first one.
What's throwing me off, too?
Okay. I apologize for this. I think that we can just go through each of them, and then we'll do a roll call motion at the end.
I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Be it therefore resolved that Tark Falah serve as Vice President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. All right. Next is there, nomination for Board Secretary.
I, Michelle Southward, nominate Carolyn Noble to serve as a Secretary of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. Are there any further nominations?
Okay. Be it therefore resolved that nominations for the Office of Secretary of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education be closed. We will vote on the resolution to elect the Secretary at the end. Be it therefore resolved that Carolyn Noble serve as Secretary of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. And then finally, a nomination for Treasurer, please.
I, Michelle Southward, nominate Tark Falah to serve as a, oh, no, I just gave you two positions.
Two roles.
Paul, my favorite Paul in the world, Paul Colan to serve as Treasurer for the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any further nominations for Treasurer? All right. Hearing none, be it therefore resolved that Paul Colan serve as Secretary of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025. Did I say the wrong name? Pardon me? Oh, wow, this is a real mess. This is, this is my fault, everyone. I'm very sorry. Okay. Paul is going to, do you accept your nomination for Treasurer?
Yes.
Tark, do you accept your nomination for Vice President?
Yes.
I accept my nomination for President, and I can convey on Carolyn's behalf that she was consulted on this topic, and she also indicated that she would be willing to accept it. Now, with all of these nominations and resolutions being out there, not sure they're in the proper order, let's take a roll call vote to find out if the board majority agrees with this.
So, do we need to make a motion? Make a motion. I move that the Board of Education elect Megan Hill to serve as President of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education until December 31, 2025.
Any discussion? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote. Trustee Abel.
Aye, yes.
Trustee Colan.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Trustee Falah? Yes. Baker? Yes. All right. The motion passes six-zero. That was smooth.
To save all these, could we do all three in one? The remaining three in one motion?
Yes, yes, that's a good idea. Okay. I make a motion to, oh, sorry.
I make the motion that trustee Tark Falah serves in the role of Vice President until December 31, 2025, and that trustee Paul Colan serves in the role of Treasurer until December 31, 2025, and trustee Carolyn Noble serves as Secretary until December 31, 2025.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote in reverse order. Trustee Baker?
Yes.
Trustee Southward?
Yes.
Trustee Falah?
Yes.
Trustee Colan?
Yes.
Trustee Abel?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. The motion passes six-zero. I think that we got through that, finally.
We did it.
That was clunky. All right. So moving on, that finishes Agenda Item 2B. We are now moving on to Agenda Item 2C. This is Board of Education Committee Liaison and Representative Appointments. So these are two, in my opinion, pretty separate items. We have the committee, or subcommittees, which last year the board adopted as a structure to replace the study sessions. We have these committees' assignments. Last year, we followed the structure of three trustees per committee. The committees are the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, the Finance and Operations Committee, the Strategic Planning Committee. Those are the three main ones. I asked the, all of the trustees to fill out an interest form to find out their preference, and as it turns out, the preferences sort of work themselves out. So I am suggesting, and then the motion can be made later by someone else, that for the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, the trustees will be trustee Baker, trustee Falah, and trustee Southward. And for the Finance and Operations Committee, it will be trustee Baker, trustee Colan, and trustee Noble. And for the Strategic Planning Committee, it will be trustee Abel, trustee Noble, and trustee Southward. Now, that indicates that Lindsay, Michelle, and Carolyn will each serve on two committees. Paul, Tark, and Jason will each serve on one. So the format that we followed last year for this was to have the trustee that is serving on only one to act as the chair, so I would suggest that Paul be the Chair of the Finance and Operations Committee, Jason be the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, and Tark will be the Chair of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. We had talked about possibly arranging it so that there's only two trustees per committee rather than three, but I think that the design of three is best for calendar and logistics and ensuring that we have enough participation at each of the meetings based on everybody's conflicts that come up as they come along. So I'm going to ask that we separate, that someone make a motion to separate this off and remove the liaison and representative appointments from this, and we have this be a motion strictly on the committees. And we can have a discussion as to why. I just...
All right. I move that we update Agenda 2C to make 2CA, 2CB. 2CA being the Board of Education Committee, and 2CB be the Board of Education Liaison Appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
The discussion I'd like to have about this is because the liaison and representative appointments are not firm. This is something that I think that we can have slight discussion about today, but I think that it would be more appropriate maybe at the study session in February to discuss that further. I'm going to be suggesting possibly a new format to that, possibly having any organization that requires by the bylaws to have a trustee assigned, that we do that, that we assign someone when there is, the bylaws require it, but if they don't, I would be interested in a board discussion at a study session about having a less formal assignment of liaison representatives for each of these, for the schools. So that's why I asked for that to be separated and pushed off to the February meeting. So we had the motion and the second, and the discussion, would anybody else like to discuss that at this time?
No.
So I'm suggesting that we push the liaison and representative appointment off to the February study session so we can discuss. And this is something also that I think the Strategic Planning Committee can talk about in their first meeting in February as well, to talk about, as a board, do we think this is the right structure and design to have, to have a trustee assigned to each of these locations. I personally, and again, would favor a more loose arrangement where we volunteer and get involved in each of these organizations more freely when we're able and not have a specific designee to each of the locations.
I'm just curious, what's the, what's the difference between being assigned versus volunteering? Is it because people who are assigned couldn't make the meeting, so it's more of a volunteer? I'm just trying to understand the logic.
Yeah, I think it's just that we don't feel that we're bound by, I think that you can kind of go down a hole with willing availability that you have as a trustee, and sometimes it doesn't always line up. Maybe you have a day of work or some event where you can make it to Conan Elementary, but you're the liaison for Eastover, and you want to maybe go more freely to the Conan thing. There's nothing that says you can't do that right now, but I just am personally a fan of a design there where we assign someone officially when the bylaws require it, but that we all participate equally when we're able across the board throughout the entire district as opposed to specific schools.
Are we open to continue the conversation?
Yep.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of liaison positions as well, so, you know, the goal of this is to connect with the different groups and make sure that we're reaching them, and if we have more people available to do it, I think that's a good thing.
Sure.
I don't think it's a bad thing.
Another thing that I would suggest is trying to create a shared calendar for us, outlining, you know, all the events that these different organizations hold. Some of them are outside of our district, right?
Yep.
Like the West Bloomfield Township meetings and the City of Troy meetings and things of that nature. If we are missing some of these items because someone else was available and willing, but they weren't the liaison, it just feels like it would be a good opportunity to test a new structure. But we can put a pin in that for our February discussion unless anyone else wants to discuss it more at this time.
My only concern, and find to discuss in February, is we do want to make sure we're connected, so I think when you're assigned, I mean, yes, you know, things happen, personal life, work, so as an example, I was assigned to the PTO, so I had on their calendar, you know, blocked it off. Some of these, and we could decide as a group, what are, you know, maybe more critical than others to make sure that there's, you know, we're giving a board perspective, because I always found those meetings, and I know Lindsay went, because Lindsay was part of the PTOC, very, very helpful, to give a board perspective in addition to like a superintendent report.
Right.
I think maybe putting a pause would allow our newly elected board members a chance to kind of process, to be able to participate in the conversation and give, you know, their opinions a little more in-depth. I don't know. Disposed of today.
I agree.
When you were referring to the bylaws, you're talking about the organizational bylaws of the different entities?
Well, some of these organizations require, per their bylaws, that a trustee be assigned as a liaison. For instance, the Preservation Bloomfield requires two representatives according to their bylaws. The Friends of the Nature Center don't require a liaison.
Yes. The reason why I ask is I know a lot of the, the schools are now, the PTOs are listed on here, and a lot of the PTOs, because I represent the PTOs, are modifying their bylaws, and some of them aren't complete yet. So some might have this requirement, some might not. That's probably going to be done, I understand, by March, so we'll know that as well.
Perfect. All right. Any further discussion on this topic? Okay, so Paul, you modified the motion to, to C...
To, yeah, 2C, so now we're voting on 2CA.
2CA. All those in favor?
We should make a motion, so...
You did make the motion.
No. Oh, we're, I'm sorry, that's right.
This is simply to modify the agenda.
Okay, yep.
All those in favor of modification of the agenda to add 2CA to be only the committee section, and then 2CB will be regarding the liaison representative appointments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Motion passes six-zero. So now the motion, the agenda has been modified for 2CA and 2CB. Regarding 2CA, I did previously list all of the suggested committee appointments. So as I had suggested them, is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the suggested committees as presented.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes six-zero. So for 2CB, the suggestion was that this be moved to the February study session and regular agenda, a regular meeting agenda for further discussion at the study session, then we'll vote at the regular meeting. We already amended for that. Okay, so, all those in favor of that?
Did we make a motion on that?
We made a motion to separate, to separate them. We already amended the agenda to separate them both. So now we're making a motion to push them to February.
Yes, so we need to make a motion to push it. So I move that we push the discussion regarding the liaison and represent, liaison and representative appointments to February.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Motion passes six-zero. Okay. It'll be smooth sailing from here. Moving on to 2D, Board of Education Committee dates. Well, no, actually, it's not.
You jinked yourself.
Yeah, yeah. So Rebecca did include in our folder a draft of the January 25 to June of 25, I'm sorry, July 25 to June 2026 Board of Education Committee planning dates.
I think we probably, I'm sorry, I think we probably need to push that because I think since you split up, you know, there's different members on different committees now, I think the chairs need to reach out to the respective members and see how that works with the administration in terms of the scheduling.
Agreed.
I would just ask that the February meetings be considered for...
So the...
The February, I don't see. The current cadence follows the calendar that was provided, so it's important to have those committees. I think if we could work with the chairs to make sure that those February meetings are scheduled and take place. If a modification needs to take place based on the two new members, we can certainly entertain that, but those meetings will be imperative as we go into the February study session and board meeting.
So I think it'd be best that we...
And have already been approved, I believe.
I think it's best that we, off the record, disagree to have the committee liaisons, chairs, rather, coordinate directly with you on that instead of modifying this motion. I think we just need to push this, this...
Oh, here it is.
Agenda item off to February. So is there a motion to adjourn to D?
To adjourn?
No, not to adjourn, not to adjourn yet.
Move it to the February date.
To table.
Yeah, I move, I move that the Board of Education Committee dates be moved to February to approve, as the chairs will work with their committee members to set at a minimum the February dates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I did have a discussion.
No. Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. All right. We'll push that off till February. E should be pretty firm. Moving on to Section 2E, Board of Education Meeting Dates. We have in our, in here, our proposed meeting dates that you were all able to review prior for the next calendar year. Thank you. The draft 2025-2026 Board of Education meeting schedule. Anybody need to have any dialogue on that, or is there a motion on that?
No. I mean, we could always, if something pops up five months from now, we could always vote at a, at a meeting. So I move that the Board of Education approve the meeting schedule as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item...
I do have one. All right. Never mind. Forget it.
Okay.
Nope.
I don't think the draft is as sharp as Detroit, so I'm good.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Administrative Appointments. 3A is the administrative appointment of Dr. Robert Phelps, the Director of Curriculum. This, this will be, we'll get through Mr. Bidlak's presentation, and then we'll make a motion and have discussion. Mr. Bidlak.
Good evening. First, I just want to congratulate our new board members that were sworn in this evening, and then to all of you for working through your calendar, committees, dates. This should be less complicated procedurally, so, but that was nice to have all of you together and our new members, and so I just wanted to say congratulations. And I would like to reintroduce many of you to Dr. Phelps, who is currently the principal at Conan Elementary, and our recommendation for hire as Director of Curriculum. Dr. Phelps has been leading Conan since 2021, propelling continued growth, serving at the forefront of several strategic initiatives, acting as a K-12 administrative liaison for visual performing and media arts, shaping professional development, and fostering a culture of high academic achievement. A couple of his most recent and notable projects include eye-ready integration and carving out additional pathways for math enrichment and acceleration. Dr. Phelps holds two bachelor's degrees, one in music and the other one in K-12 education, as well as a Master of Arts degree in teaching from Oakland University, earning a second Master's degree also in K-12 educational administration, and he has his doctorate, Master's degree also in K-12 educational administration, and he has his doctorate, or he earned his Doctorate of Educational Leadership at Michigan State University with a dissertation titled "Understanding the Impact of Teacher Departures on School Culture and Stakeholder Engagement." Before coming to Bloomfield Hills as a principal, Dr. Phelps was a learning and program consultant at Rochester Community Schools, responsible for leading the transformation of district-wide literacy and mathematics intervention and data-informed instructional strategies. Before that, he also served as a classroom teacher, and Dr. Phelps is also actively involved with the Council for Exceptional Children and the Michigan Association of Special Education. Dr. Phelps is passionate about fostering collaboration, working with teachers and students, and designing meaningful educational experiences. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Phelps as our recommendation for Director of Curriculum.
I move that the Board of Edu, I mean, I move Dr. Robert Phelps be appointed as Director of Curriculum for Bloomfield Hills Schools with the effective date of January 27, 2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Superintendent West, President Hill, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as the Director of Curriculum for our district. During my time at Conan Elementary School, I embraced the theme of care, connecting, acknowledging, respecting, and engaging, and I'm excited to carry that focus into my new role. As the Director of Curriculum, I'll be dedicated to supporting world-class opportunities for our students, fostering growth and leadership in our teachers and our staff, and strengthening our partnerships with our community and our schools. I look forward to working with you and contributing to the continued success of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of us.
That is.
It's always exciting when Dr. Dan Hartley has something to present. Moving on to agenda item 4A, celebrating success, the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition Awards. This will be presented by Dr. Dan Hartley, our high school principal.
Superintendent West, President Hill, members of the board, thank you so much for having me and recognizing our outstanding students and staff this evening. I have the pleasure of presenting the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition recognize. And to start, the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition is a very competitive event sponsored by the James Pearson Duffy Department of Art and Art History at Wayne State University. High school students from Oakland, McComb, and Wayne Counties submitted pieces of artwork for adjudication, and juniors selected 100, and jurors, excuse me, jurors selected 120 works to be featured in the final exhibit. Under the leadership of Bloomfield Hills High School Art Teachers, Mr. Matt Beauchamp, Ms. Tessa Basirico, and Ms. Peg Pasternak, our students did incredibly well with 18 pieces of artwork out of the 120, that's pretty remarkable in the whole Tri-County area, accepted into the exhibition. So I'm going to first ask our art teachers who are here tonight to join me up front. So Mr. Beauchamp and Ms. Basirico, come on up. And students, if you are in the audience, as I call your names, come on up and line up up front, starting with Roman Bari for Fingernails. Sage Booth, The Wild Chase. Rose Charneski with Limerence and At Last. Jordan Goldstein and Leah Goldstein for Skull. Magnus Jertz for, I'll probably get this wrong, Woken Marked, which also won honorable mention at the exhibit. We have Anna Cole for Watched. Bertie Parker for Sediment and Ant Farm. Dylan Pisanka for Deep Sea Sanctuary and Cyber Nail, which also won first place. Congrats, Dylan. Andrew Sue for I Miss You and The Shame in Feeling. Kena Whack for Levels and Lilies. And Ella Marie Gordhammer for At Peace and Swedish Girl. And last, but certainly not least, I have one more recognition to present, and that's, I'm honored to do this as well and stand before you today to recognize Bloomfield Hills High School Art Teacher and Visual Arts Department Chair, Mr. Matthew Beauchamp, who won Teacher of the Year Award at this recent art exhibition. So congratulations. All right, come on together.
Students, can you scoot one, have one step here? Not you, everybody. Here we go. Okay, sorry, thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
That is all of us.
Yep, right in the middle here, and then the back there. Yeah. Sure. We're, we're, we're around you. There it is.
All right. It's always exciting when Dr. Dan Hartley has something to present. Moving on to agenda item 4A, celebrating success, the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition Awards. This will be presented by Dr. Dan Hartley, our high school principal.
Superintendent West, President Hill, members of the board, thank you so much for having me and recognizing our outstanding students and staff this evening. I have the pleasure of presenting the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition recognize. And to start, the Tri-County High School Art Exhibition is a very competitive event sponsored by the James Pearson Duffy Department of Art and Art History at Wayne State University. High school students from Oakland, McComb, and Wayne Counties submitted pieces of artwork for adjudication, and juniors selected 100, and jurors, excuse me, jurors selected 120 works to be featured in the final exhibit. Under the leadership of Bloomfield Hills High School Art Teachers, Mr. Matt Beauchamp, Ms. Tessa Basirico, and Ms. Peg Pasternak, our students did incredibly well with 18 pieces of artwork out of the 120, that's pretty remarkable in the whole Tri-County area, accepted into the exhibition. So I'm going to first ask our art teachers who are here tonight to join me up front. So Mr. Beauchamp and Ms. Basirico, come on up. And students, if you are in the audience, as I call your names, come on up and line up up front, starting with Roman Bari for Fingernails. Sage Booth, The Wild Chase. Rose Charneski with Limerence and At Last. Jordan Goldstein and Leah Goldstein for Skull. Magnus Jertz for, I'll probably get this wrong, Woken Marked, which also won honorable mention at the exhibit. We have Anna Cole for Watched. Bertie Parker for Sediment and Ant Farm. Dylan Pisanka for Deep Sea Sanctuary and Cyber Nail, which also won first place. Congrats, Dylan. Andrew Sue for I Miss You and The Shame in Feeling. Kena Whack for Levels and Lilies. And Ella Marie Gordhammer for At Peace and Swedish Girl. And last, but certainly not least, I have one more recognition to present, and that's, I'm honored to do this as well and stand before you today to recognize Bloomfield Hills High School Art Teacher and Visual Arts Department Chair, Mr. Matthew Beauchamp, who won Teacher of the Year Award at this recent art exhibition. So congratulations. All right, come on together.
We'll pause a second here. Do you guys have anything?
All right, quick, quick.
Everybody, scan. Students, you guys can go, and I'll take my address with Matt and proceed to the, for students.
Great, thank you. Yeah. Thank you. So much.
All right, congratulations to those students on their achievements.
Moving on to special recognition item crossed off, 4B, National School Board Recognition Month.
Yes, I will take this one. It is my privilege and honor to acknowledge and honor the Board of Education. I do believe, prior to getting into the proclamation that most districts read it, I do want to extend my sincere appreciation and acknowledgement of the work that all of you do, often thankless and I know underpaid. I do greatly appreciate it. I believe that the symbiotic relationship between a board and its superintendent is critically important to the success of the school district, and I look very forward to working with the seven of you as we move forward in what I think is going to be a pivotal time for Bloomfield Hills Schools. We'll get to do exceptional work on behalf of our students, so I look forward to that relationship and continuing our work together, and thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart for the work and the sacrifices that you all make on really a daily basis. Many people don't see it, but it's really on a daily basis through our communications with one another and your deep care for the school district and the students. So I, I say that and I mean it, and I truly, genuinely look forward to continuing our work moving forward. So it is my honor to read the Certificate of Proclamation on behalf of the people of Michigan. Gretchen Whitmer, Governor of Michigan, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month. Whereas Michigan is home to nearly 600 locally-elected school boards that work to enrich the lives of Michigan students through education and directly influencing instruction in Michigan's public schools, and whereas local school board members are exceptional public servants who have dedicated and committed themselves to this duty by governing school districts, listening to parent voices, and advancing student achievement and well-being in the schools and communities they serve, and whereas during this month, we join with the Michigan Association of School Boards, Michigan Department of Education, local school districts and community organizations to recognize and raise awareness of the countless efforts and contributions of local school boards and school board members throughout Michigan. And now therefore, I, Gretchen Whitmer, Governor of Michigan, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as School Board Recognition Month in Michigan.
That's exciting.
So, so we do, we extend a round of applause. Certainly, there are special guests. Paulina and Alex are here to represent the PTOC and have a token of appreciation for the board, as well as you have been given gifts from the school district that are here as well, and just as a small token of our appreciation for all of the work you do. So I turn it over to Paulina and Alex.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Paulina Hakopian, and?
Alexandra Lenkowski.
And we're here this evening on behalf of the PTO Council as the current president and president-elect to express our heartfelt gratitude to the countless hours that you all serve as board members. Quite frankly, your role is a vital link between our community and our school district, and your unwavering commitment is an essential piece in realizing the hopes and dreams for our children. To our brand-new board members, welcome. Your fresh perspectives and enthusiasm are invaluable as we navigate the exciting journey ahead. And to our senior board members and re-elected board member, thank you for your continued dedication and leadership, which have paved the way for our progress.
We truly appreciate the countless hours you invest in building an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's students. With your guidance, we look forward to fostering continued growth, strength, and unity within our schools.
As a small token of our very sincere appreciation, please accept the gifts before you, the smaller one, which we believe embodies the spirit of Bloomfield Hills Schools. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It feels silly to have you standing up here thanking us because we know how much you work, you do as well, which is immense. So thank you for all that you do as well. We really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to agenda item five, Superintendent's Report.
Yes, many celebrations this month. First, I want to acknowledge I had an opportunity to see Mamma Mia on last Friday, I think it was, that we were there, and my family and I enjoyed that very much. We saw the, the fall production as well, and just continue to be blown away by the talent. Speaking of talent, we have many students being recognized by the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association, and we look forward to, and the All-State Ensembles, and we look forward to recognizing their efforts and success in March. Our ski club, one of the longest, I've learned to come and understand, one of our longest-serving part, or groups, has taken off, and it's a robust program, serving over 275 of our kids, I think on two different ski hills, Mount Holly and Pine Knob. So it is an exciting opportunity for those kids to continue to participate and enjoy the Michigan winter. I had the opportunity also, over the course of the last couple of weeks or since the, since the last board meeting, to attend a few athletic events and just continue to be amazed by, again, the talent on the field, in our drama programs, in our music programs, so look forward to that. Invite everybody out to the Black Hawk Fever on February 7. This will be my first time, but I have been assured that it is a wonderful opportunity and will be a wonderful way to also spend my wife's birthday. So we will come out and enjoy that evening in celebration of all of the efforts of our athletic program. We continue our Dare to Care initiative throughout the district as we continue to collect our stories and tell our stories. I've been to many of the PTO events, been to all of the staff meetings, and have continued to say, we must tell our stories or people will tell stories about us, and we want to control the narrative. And Dare to Care, the Dare to Care Bank has been open since November, and it is a depository to continue to share our stories of how we see connection, acknowledgement, respect, and engagement in action. We have over 200 entries. It is our quest by the end of the year to get to 1,000. I believe it is a lofty goal, but I believe it is attainable, and we will be, we are continuing to share those stories on our social media platforms and recognize our staff that are being recognized by our other staff. So we are excited and fired up about that initiative, and really, I will find a way to invite the Board of Education to continue to participate in that as well, as you guys are conduits to our community and you see these things in action. So I look forward to sharing that and continuing to be an ambassador for that work. School staff and PTO meetings, I did just finish up, or I think I have a couple more this week and next week to finish up our roadshow, our, really our fall roadshow, but we got a little bit of a later start. I've been able to connect with all of our PTO and staff meeting, staff to give a unified message of what I believe are the big things going on. In the school district right now, we are going to start drafting our spring roadshow. Again, as I said in my 90-day plan, it is my way to connect with community, it's my way to connect with staff, one of the ways, and I think we've had some success throughout the fall in making, in letting our story be heard as well. Kindergarten Info Night is this Wednesday, Wednesday night at 6:00 PM at BHHS, Bloomfield Hills High School. We look forward to welcoming our youngest learners, some of our youngest learners, and really, this is a kickoff to the planning for the 25-26 school year, which is just amazing to think about. And if I am doing my calculation correctly, this is the class of 2038 we're, will be welcoming, so just amazing. It's so cool to think about and just see the excitement and the fear on some of our parents and our kids' faces. Upcoming events that I want to make sure that the community's aware of, Coffee and Chat, February 13 at 10:00 AM, Conan Elementary, and then Storytime with the Superintendent is March 20, 4:30 PM. I do look forward to March's Reading Month and getting out to our buildings and reading, and I'm sure there will be ample opportunities for all of us to engage in those activities. It's a wonderful month of celebration and making sure that we're, we're emphasizing
That will include meetings with Business Services, Human Resources and Operations, Learning Services, Superintendent's Office, and Communications. MASB is hosting a virtual winter institute, February 7th through 8th, 2025, which offers a wide range of board member certification courses designed to enhance knowledge and skills, along with board president's workshops. I know some of us are being registered for these professional development courses. MASB also offers on-demand courses, which are a great way to access the workshops as scheduled per minute. I will say that having attended the board president workshop last year, I think it is valuable for any trustee to participate in that workshop, regardless of their intent to run for the presidency or not. I think it's a good overall, just discussion about the ins and outs of board dynamics, and I think it'd be worthwhile if anyone is interested in that. Regarding our superintendent evaluation training, we will be looking for training opportunities for trustees Abel and Baker, who are required to be, to go through the training so that they're ready for this next schedule report in the evaluation cycle in March. The National School Board Association Conference. Trustee Noble will be attending the NSBA Advocacy and Equity Institute in Washington, DC, as part of a delegation of trustees from Oakland County. She'll be doing that next week. The Advocacy and Equity Institute explores the latest developments in education policy and legislation, aiming to empower school board members and education leaders with the knowledge, tools, and strategies needed to address barriers to equity in education. Trustees will participate in learning sessions, participate in Hill visits, and have small and large group meetings with legislators. Trustee Noble is looking forward to sharing her experience at the February meeting. She'll be sharing that with us. And that is all I have for that, for my update for today. Agenda Item 7 is Board Intern and Student Advisory Committee Report. This will be presented by Adeline Sherman and Aya Mascoon. Who are our board interns. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. For those who don't know or may only be joining us today, my name is Aya Mascoon. I'm a senior over at the International Academy.
And I'm Addie Sherman. I'm a junior at Bloomfield Hills High School.
And together, we're the interns for the Board of Education Intern Program, which aims to work closely with the board but provide a student perspective on resolving an issue we feel is prevalent within the district. For the 2024-2025 school year, we decided we wanted to remedy what we felt was a lack of connection between the different buildings across our district, so whether that be from the elementary, middle, and high schoolers, or whether that be across campuses like Bowers, IA, and the BHHS campus. This month, we worked on starting events that we hope to bring to fruition by around April, May, by the end of the school year, for sure. We were happy to discover that there already are several existing programs, but we want to expand these and strengthen them so that more people are aware of them and more people will be attending them. It did provide a little bit of a challenge, though, because we want to ensure that our ideas are unique and new, and that they're not overstepping on any other potential programs. So we're doing this by focusing on different departments. Those are girls' sports, boys' sports, theater, forensics, and then music. And we actually have two of our council members here today to present their own department, so that's Giselle, and then Ben will be presenting the boys' sports. So, Giselle.
Hi, my name is Giselle, and Ben and I, as well as Katie and Jordan, who could not make it today, are responsible for the girls' and boys' sports departments, and we are organizing a video that will expose middle, middle school students to the variety of sports offered at the high school.
I'm Ben Geller. I'm another one of the council members. As some of you may know, I'm on the wrestling team, and I think this is one of the conducive ways that we can build this unified Bloomfield Hills Schools culture. One of the ways that we're doing this is by organizing district-wide wrestling practices, that's my own sport, and working with Jordan Newman and Giselle Hadad. We hope to do this across multiple different sports. By offering these practices, we can kind of build the connection that we need between high schoolers and middle schoolers to enrich the culture and wa, and encourage the youth to kind of want to pursue an education at Bloomfield Hills Schools. As you all know, we, we lose a lot of kids to the private schools in the area, and this is really the goal that we want to focus on, is, you know, keeping everybody in the district and offering a, you know, a swell education and extracurricular experience. So, thank you all for, you know, letting us embark on this journey, and we hope to provide more updates in the spring.
We hope that through these programs, like Ben said, children will be encouraged to go to the BHHS or go to IA, because sports are obviously a very engaging and inclusive way of bringing people together. Our next update is on the theater department, who our council member Brady Wilson is working on. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it today, so we will be presenting for him. So this was a little bit of a difficult challenge because the middle school theater productions have not started yet. However, we are in communication with all the theater leads at the different middle school campuses, and the current idea is to actually bring the high school theater members over to the middle schools and then watch their practices. This will, one, help the students feel more seen, you know, feel like they're, for once, being the ones watched, not watching the older children. And then it will also just, you know, help foster that love. They're going to be able to hear about the theater program at the high school and be encouraged to join it. Another idea to increase bonding between the high school theater programs, so this is going to be a cross-campus event, we're hoping, we're currently working with the directors to see whether it's possible, is a high school theater club, so the IA and BH campus. We're going to do a musical movie night. The profits will go toward the theater department or a nonprofit that we select, but it's just going to be a fun social event that helps everyone introduce each other and to get introduced to each other and meet the other, you know, people that they may not have worked with yet because they attend the different campuses, but they'll be, all be combined together through their love for theater.
So, another one of our council members, Ava, could not be here tonight, but she was focusing on our forensics team, and she came up with some of the showcase, and essentially, the high school forensicators, and for people who don't know what forensics is, it's our competitive speech team, and so the, our, our high school forensicators will go, like, come down to the middle schools and basically watch and, like, kind of judge the middle schoolers and, of course, give them feedback. And as I was a, I, in middle school, I was in forensics, and having some sort of high schooler to come watch and give me feedback would have been so beneficial, and I think that would be a great idea for our middle school. And this would be planned, of course, before April, and then I and I were focusing on our music department, and there was very little space to expand on these programs. Like, wow, we are so proud, like, from the department heads, they showed us this extensive list, and we're just so shocked, but we're very, we're very, um, we want to connect it, we want to connect the high schoolers, I guess, closer to our middle schoolers, and we could do this through something called a jam-off. So what we were thinking is that our middle school and our high school band and orchestras would come together and kind of like split off into sections, so we would have the saxophones, the clarinets, the violins, the cellos, and they would kind of do like, they would kind of compete like a dance-off, but like band and orchestra, and then, of course, you would invite all the parents and all the friends, and it would, it would be great, and it would kind of have that one-on-one experience with the high schoolers and the middle schoolers that you don't really get from, I mean, I guess, just playing together, but actually learn like a bit of a song and then perform that in front of parents, kind of as like a friendly battle. And then recently, South Hills Middle School and North Hills Middle School caroled together at Greenfield Village for, and they sung "Unsung Heroes," and we thought that caroling idea was also very, very interesting, and hosting another one of those would be great. And, again, like, we really just want to create an even stronger bond between our older and our younger students because it could just be such a beneficial experience for not only the middle schoolers, but the high schoolers as well.
And then this month, we also had the pleasure of meeting with the Bowers principal. So Addie and I were talking, and we realized we don't actually have any communicate, we're not in communication with anybody at Bowers, we have no idea how the program actually works. So we reached out to the principal and we set up a meeting, and we just talked within ourselves, and we learned about how exactly students at Bowers who want to participate in extracurricular activities, for example, forensics, the music, the sports, how exactly would they do that. And Ms. Umberger, so she's the new principal over at Bowers, she very kindly told us, you know, how the system works, and essentially, students at Bowers who wish to participate in such activities go over to BHHS. So that just really helped us ensure that the Bowers students are also being included in our programs, and in the events that we are hosting, they're also being invited to those, and we're not leaving anybody in the district out. We also wanted to connect with Ms. Umberger so that she could reach out to us if there's any points of pride over at the Bowers campus, because, again, once again, we have nobody to hear about that from. And then Addie's going to present points of pride.
So, to begin our points of pride, I really wanted to highlight the basketball breast cancer fundraiser that we just had at the high school, and it was led by our student council, and I think it's so important that our district really focuses on charity and philanthropy and fundraising because it's such an important part of our community, and this event was, had, was so successful, and we should, of course, host most of these. And then I is going to discuss Black Hawk Fever, which is coming this February.
So, Black Hawk Fever is going to be within the next two weeks. It's obviously a showcase of Bloomfield Hills High School's spirit, and actually, Black Hawk Fever connects very closely to what we were talking about, our mission statement, and what Ben and Giselle were talking about. Essentially, we're going to have the junior varsity, varsity basketball teams play, there's going to be middle and elementary school students who are welcome to attend, which, you know, this event is just really going to highlight the BH Athletics, as long as the Drumline Robotics Team and Student Leadership. Hopefully, the entire school will be filled with tables from every sport, which will help engage the future Blackhawks and really create a welcoming community. If anyone has any questions or suggestions for us, please feel free to reach out to either myself, Aya Mascoon, or Adeline Sherman, and then, of course, we can put you in contact with any of our council members if need be. Hopefully, by next month, we're going to have more updates on the actual, what the dates and the more information about the actual events we're planning, but we're really looking forward to everything we have coming soon. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
I just have to say, I'm blown away by, I'm sure all the trustees feel the same way. I'm blown away by your participation in this program and what you've brought to this role, and it's, this is incredible. I think you're doing a wonderful job. Love all your ideas. I don't know if any other trustees have anything to say, but I'm incredibly impressed by, by what you've been presenting to us. So, thank you.
You guys said you're making a video?
Did I hear that right?
Yeah, I can expand on that. So the video is going to include information regarding each specific sport that we have available at the high school, and it'll also include benefits regarding joining those sports and any fun activities that they have, and then any extra information that we want to include regarding high school extracurriculars, and then we could share that to the middle schools.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, that was great. Okay, moving on to Section 8, Public Comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? No. All right, moving on to Section 9, Consent Agenda. This is, Section A is normally presented by Secretary Noble. I would ask trustee Colan if you could please work through this tonight.
I move the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to Section 10A, Board Business. Section 10A is the request to approve Bid PAC 12 Lone Pine Elementary Front Entrance Site Work. This will be presented by Superintendent West.
Yes. So we have the recommendation before you with the supporting documentations to approve the site work. A little bit about the scope, if you're all familiar with the front of Lone Pine Elementary, there's quite a bit of concrete out there, and there's a patio. The work there is to renovate that entire, you'll also notice that some of that concrete is in fairly poor shape, so there has been a design process led by Mr. McDonald and, and the team to renovate that whole area and redo that concrete. So, they did bid that work, and our recommendation is that we support the, support the recommendation as provided.
You said, what is this lady just talking about?
The timeline of the projects, I do not have, I'd have to, I'd have to get back with you on that. I would imagine they will move as much of it ahead, being cognizant of the logistics and the safety.
Is there an actual design that's incorporated?
There, there is a design to the project. It is, it's not in this packet here, but we can also send that too. I have seen some renderings, it's been a couple of months, but we can get that information to you as well.
Were any of the renderings discussed with students or anything, were there, there insights taken in and, and looking at the designs or choosing the final designs?
Again, I'll have to ask Mr. McDonald what the collaboration process was on that, and I know that the, it crossed the building principles, so Ms. Isaac has in, picked up where they left off with it, so I don't know what the collaborative design process was on that, but I know it, it crossed over two principles.
Thank you.
When I came on, in fact, it was one of the first discussions that, that I had, and they were throwing around some designs there, and Ms. Isaac started with, with me, so.
Does, do you know if this reconfigures any pathways, or if it suggests?
Yeah. That's what I was going to ask.
It is my understanding it's the front, the front entrance. So there's the pathway coming from, what, where would that be? The west? The, the patio's on the west, so I don't think there's a, there's a public, public walkway from the west, and I don't think it gets around the east, so.
I guess the question, yeah, one of the questions goes with this, because we did other things with, like, Kona is an example, and things had to get changed, so like, will the, will the West Bloomfield Township have to go in and approve this, or do we, have we taken into consideration any potential issues where they say this wouldn't pass because of fire code issues, whatever it may be?
It's my, again, Mr. McDonald would speak to this better, but
What a night for him to ask you to say that.
It would be, it would be my expectation that through the design process, we worked through most of that, we are asking for a 10% contingency for any unforeseen, but as far as the design and the concrete, I don't believe there's much addition, so as far as retainage of water and all of that stuff, I would think it was all included in the design process. That would be my expectation, and I would be surprised if it was otherwise.
It's like we got burned on Kona?
So, a lot of that, a lot of that was as a result of the fire
Yeah.
Fire lanes in there. I know that there was a lot of learning around that, and I don't think we have the same issues as it relates to this project. Again, this project is mostly safety and aesthetics as it relates to the front entrance and that patio and the concrete condition in there, so that's, it's more of a replacement project and an aesthetic upgrade as it is a functionality.
And that issue with Kona was the township changing the rules after
Correct.
After we had, the plans had been made. The requirements changed because of the fire at Oakland Hills, so that changed.
Yes, and this is, this would be under the jurisdiction of West Bloomfield.
Right.
So.
Okay. Well, if we have any more discussion, we can have it after, is there a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve Bid Package 12 Lone Pine Elementary Front Entrance Site Work in the amount of $365,310, inclusive of 10% contingency, to be paid from the 2020 Bond Fund as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to B, Request to Approve Bid PAC T8 Technology Systems. This will be presented by Samer Al-Sayed-Solomon. Samer?
Samer.
Samer, sorry. You know what? Last time I pronounced your name correctly, and you said
I didn't correct you.
And you said, I'm really impressed at how well you pronounced it, and then tonight I got it wrong.
I think it was the last name.
Oh, right. Okay. My apologies. Well, I'll work on it more next time. You are our Director of Information Technology. If you want to give us any insights before we make a motion and then can have a discussion after the motion is made.
Yeah, absolutely. So Bid PAC T8 is going to focus on a few different areas. Our high school classrooms are about 11 years old, so all that technology in there needs to be gutted and replaced, so that will be taken care of over summer of '25. Access control and video surveillance at the high school is also pretty old, needs to be replaced as well. And then we also have some specialty AV across the district, so if you think about your gymnasiums, some of the Lone Pine Eastover gyms need to be replaced with newer audio systems. This also captures the needs that robotics has at Bloom and West as well.
Wow. Technology is already owned.
So, I guess comparing in the high school, what do they have now and when what's going to happen?
We're going to try to replicate what we have at the middle schools right now. So if you've been to north and south, it's going to kind of feel the same way. We are simplifying the We are simplifying the design pretty significantly from what it used to be at the high school.
Which means what?
Making it easier for teachers to use and just streamlining the connections to, to the network.
Have the teachers, oh, sorry, go ahead. Have the teachers or students been kind of consulted on the model technology? If there is kind of a set for them to try out?
So, we actually built out a demo room at the high school that's been in place for about two and a half months to get feedback from the teachers and from the students and the administration. And we've taken their feedback and kept on redesigning until we got it correct.
So, this is similar to what's at the middle schools already?
Correct.
We got a feedback from them that, you know, they're liking it and it's going well.
You know, it's a pilot room, so it's, it's had some challenges, but we've worked through a lot of those challenges. And by the time the summer comes, we will have perfected that system. The high school is a little bit unique because the spaces have so many displays and the technology that's required there is different than all the other buildings.
And what's this, when you mentioned as part of the surveillance? Like, you know, what's, what is there now? What's going in?
So, we are going to be adding some additional cameras to the high school. We have some really old Samsung cameras currently there that are end of life, that are starting to fail. They have to be removed and replaced with newer cameras. So, we're not reducing cameras. We're just replacing and adding some additionals in some blind spots that we have. Also, T8 is going to focus on Wing Lake, has really old classroom technology as well. So, all that will be gutted and overhauled over the summer.
Is that the same technology that's going into the high school? That's been in the demo rooms?
I would probably say it's probably more comparable to the elementary classrooms than the high school.
And have those, has that technology been demoed?
We already have that technology now in the four elementary schools and we know what it feels like and how it works, so it'll be easy to implement.
So, this is in the summer?
Summer.
Wing Lake is still operating right in the summer? Is there any disruption?
They have a two-week break.
Okay, so it's done during that?
So, we're going to try to do our best to get as much done in two weeks and whatever we don't get done will be done second shift and third shift.
All the answers prepared?
Got it all right here.
Is, is there a motion? We can have further discussion after the motion if needed. Is there a motion?
I, I move the Board of Education to approve Bid Package T8 Technology Systems in the amount of $2,017,385, inclusive of 10% contingency to be paid for from the 2020 Bond Fund and Center Program Fund as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions?
So, we had a, there was a conversation that we had last, I think the last meeting regarding us not having enough bandwidth with like Wi-Fi connection, cell phone tower-esque. Is this connected to, to that at all?
It is not.
What was the robotics piece you mentioned?
So, the redesign of Blooming West also includes some robotics as well getting redesigned. And so, we have like an audio system going in there. We do have some cabling needs over there as well. So, we're just prepping that area for them as well to take over. Wi-Fi, network, all of it.
And have you talked to the robotics team and the leadership there to see that this matches what their needs are?
We met with about 10 of them and we went through an entire list of what their needs are. And we were able to accommodate almost everything that they asked for, with the exception of cell reception, because that is not something that the district controls.
That's a tough area over there.
Correct.
It's a tough area in a lot of districts.
North Hills is a tough area. The entire district is a tough area.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I think maybe North Hills is the worst.
More of a township issue than it is a school district issue.
Any further discussion? All right, motion was made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Samer.
I have one more.
Oh, that's right. It's exciting. Request to approve Bid Pack T9 District-Wide Area Network E-Rate Project.
So, portions of T8 qualify for E-Rate. If you don't know, E-Rate is a federal program that provides funding for libraries and K-12 organizations. And we're able to take advantage of some federal funding to cover some of our needs. And so, in this bid pack, I came to the board about a year ago for Wide Area Network Phase 1. That's our fiber optics that connect from here to the entire district. So, Phase 1 is almost complete. We are going to start Phase 2 over the summer. So, that'll be that first big number of about $900,000. We have some cabling needs, so just regular ethernet cabling for Wi-Fi, for classrooms, just for different needs that we have. And then, we also need some additional network switching, access points and some UPSs. Those are battery backups for our network closets.
How often are these needs to be redone?
So, the wide area network, probably anywhere between 20 to 25 years. So, our network was put in back in '99 and we're just now replacing it.
The fiber optic system connects the different schools and administrative offices together?
The head end is here and then the fiber travels up to all the buildings.
And then, the cable that's being put in is that ethernet in each, local to each building?
It is. It gets, it gets bored into every building. Correct.
So, head end, connection out over whatever primary circuit. And you've got paths to each one of the locations, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, going back to like, I guess in terms of redundancy, what happens, because we saw what happened with this, with, with what happened with that accident. In terms of this design, what do we have? Could we have maybe to offset any kind of issue? Because I'm just thinking, if there is any kind of a disruption here potentially, right? That would sever everybody else. So, I'm just trying to think and maybe you've already done this and maybe I'm just going to ask you, but that's where my mind goes is when something like that has happened. Like, what do we build into this design to protect and make sure that we, whatever we can possibly do to prevent that or mitigate it is taken into account?
Yeah, I mean, so what happened was very unfortunate.
Yeah.
It was probably the worst-case scenario of the situation, if I'm just being honest. So, we get our internet from Oakland Schools, which actually comes into the high school.
Right.
But Oakland Schools is getting ready to run another line of fiber to a different location. So, we will have some redundancy coming in from Oakland Schools. As for us as a district, a little bit tougher because it is very expensive to have redundancy fiber.
Sure.
So, we can look at some other possible solutions, but they are very pricey.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking as long as we have redundancy from whatever, you know, main line into here, that's good because then we've at least stopped that, you know, one thing from taking out everything.
Yeah.
In terms of here to each of the other spokes, yeah, I mean, if we lose, I mean, it is what it is. Long-term, maybe we should, I don't know what happens. If this goes down, what that severs in terms of emergency services, phone services for each of the buildings and then, you know, what's the plan B backup when that hap? I don't know. And maybe we have that. I just, I don't know what it is. So, I think when that happened, it was kind of a moment for me to say, yeah, what, what do we do? I don't really know. It was the worst possible scenario for sure. Like, it's a one-in-a-million kind of thing. But, yeah, hopefully, but it still, I think it's nice to have some kind of a, here's what happens, you know, emergency scenario for those kinds of things.
Yeah, agreed. And we can, we can explore some options.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will become, the redundancy and reliability is what we're talking about of our systems. And as Samer talked about, I mean, you've been here 19, 20 years or so and we've never dealt with that situation. I have had the unfortunate experience throughout my career to have dealt with this in each of my other districts and it is the worst-case scenario. As he mentioned, the redundancy of the system is cost prohibitive typically, but how do we create more reliability and what resources do we put toward that is going to be part of more of a prioritization of the resources. So, we, we will embark on that discuss. Same thing comes up when we have electric outages. You know, what type of generators do we have and have we prioritized those? And, and those are fair questions. And typically, my experience has been we haven't prioritized that redundancy or reliability within the system. So, more to come on that, more discussions to have and certainly, that's, that's part of the board's discussion too, so.
Yeah, but I will say this is a very big milestone to get this fiber upgraded from what it is currently. And just the amount of trees that surround our fiber is, is a lot.
Yeah, it's scary.
Yeah.
It is, it is one of those things, you know, you deal with what you can deal with.
Yeah. So, our plan to even is to just do some maintenance every year, just to even do some tree, tree trimming across the district just to help reduce the damages to our fiber.
Yeah.
Now, this isn't something that is underground or can be? Or is it only above ground?
On the DTE polls, it can be underground, but you'd be talking millions.
Yeah, they're never going to do it.
Yeah.
Ever. Don't even, they will never do it.
2038 students are going to be here and they're going to make this happen.
If they want to go out and put some shovels in the ground and dig it up, go for there. Nobody's going to do it.
2038 student interns are going to be here.
Is there a way to kind of, when we're talking about prioritizing systems, the emergency systems, having the secondary be cell or satellite-based? Starlink, something like that where you don't even have to worry about the, the cabling? I know it's expensive and slower, but I don't know if there's portions of the system that can have that as a redundancy?
We're going to explore some options internally and just.
That'll have to be weighed against risk too, right?
Yeah.
What is our exposure? One time in 20 years is, we got to weigh that against the realities.
We could find a countermeasure to take, like, it may not be worth it, right? And, you know, that's, I, I'm only asking, these are like the questions I ask myself all the time when I'm doing what I do and the cost may be X and the risk is Y and it may not make sense and that's fine. But I think just, this was a good time for us to at least have the discussion. I'm sure not a good time for you, but it came up and is what it is and we appreciate it. So, I'm only asking just because it came up and it, and it brought itself out, so I think.
It's a fair, it's a fair question and I've thought about those questions too. We've talked about it internally as well.
Sure. Okay.
We did not have a motion on this yet. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education to approve Bid Package T9 District-Wide Area Network E-Rate Project in the amount of $1,330,747.33, inclusive of 10% contingency to be paid from the 2020 Bond Fund and Center Program Fund as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Samer, for your time. Moving on to Agenda Item E, Request to Adopt Bloomfield Hills High School New Courses and Course Changes.
No, no, that's not it.
We can talk about that. It may not be good.
Oh, I apologize.
Good luck, David.
I apologize. I got ahead on my check marks.
I got ahead of myself there. Item D, Request to Award Bid for Physical Move Services. This will be presented by David Shulkin, our Director of Instructional Technology.
So, good evening. By the way, Samer is a very, very, very legendary in our house because we got the first fiber snow day and so it was wonderful. And although those pictures were very disheartening, so I'm glad he was stressing. I was a little less stressed, so thank you, Samer. I'm here with Kevin Massey with PMR. He's our lead project, our leader for our project for our physical move services that we'll be doing this summer 2025. And that's the motion in front of you and our recommendation.
Can you explain a little bit more of what this is?
Yeah, so, just like, like we did last year, we, we moved all our elementary schools out. Remember, we moved all that furniture, all the old furniture out. We moved a lot of the stuff that was internal and then we moved new furniture in. This summer, we'll be moving all that furniture out again to do new flooring and painting. Those will be stored and, and/or put internally in the buildings. Those include all four elementaries. We also have some work at International Academy. We'll be moving their front office, doing some of those. And then, Kevin's team will also be moving, will be taking care of and protecting some technology as well as moving some stuff internally and all. So, when I say internally, so for example, Paul, you're moving from 5th grade at Lone, or Lone Pine, you're going to Conant, we'll move those as well. And those typically, we would use other services internally, but we're putting this all as one package for the summer.
Is this? I'm sorry?
I guess the question is, we're talking about moving services and I forget when robotics needs to move from their current location in Franklin to Blooming West. That's not part of this, is that a separate?
This is not part of this, this current scope, yeah. Yeah, as we get closer into those schedules, we'll work on what that, whether we're doing that internally, whether we're doing an RFP for that. We'll just have to know what kind of that scope and scale is because to your point, what you're getting at is there's going to be some puzzle pieces moving. So, right now, we had stuff at Lone Pine that we're storing that will ultimately go back to Franklin once we move them out to Blooming West. So, there's all these like puzzle pieces moving and thankfully, Kevin's here to answer kind of those logistical questions if you have them. But he's kind of managing, him and his team are managing those components for us and those day-to-day operations of that.
So, is this just move in, move out, move back in or is this replacement with new?
So, a little bit of a combination. So, there's some nuance to that. In general, 90, 95% or so is all just move out, move back in because we got new furniture last summer for the elementaries. The things that we did not do, we did two, two media centers, Eastover and Lone Pine Media Center. We'll get new furniture, or newer furniture. When I say newer, meaning they're not getting all replacement. They'll be combination. We're not getting rid of good furniture currently in our systems. In addition, at Conant and Eastover, we had a lot of casework. If you guys have been in those buildings, you know, you've seen all that old casework and maybe like science-like casework and cabinetry. Much of that is being removed this summer as part of the scope of work and we'll be putting back in some of that storage through the furniture. So, it'll be kind of new furniture. Now, you're not approving new furniture tonight. Just understand that. This is strictly the move services to move stuff out, move it back in. And in February, I'll be coming to you with that, once we're, you know, finalize the design and that stuff for that approval.
So, the supply of the bins for storage, but staff will have to do the packing, correct?
That is correct. And so, this does, and we feel for a lot of our, there's some of our staff, this will be their fifth summer of moving. And that's, that's brutal and it's recognized and we're trying to work through that. The great thing is Kevin's put together a great package to try to help support that. And so, for example, we'll have movers in those buildings to help. So, Michelle, you're trying to get rid of your classroom, like, I just need that extra bonus help. We'll have extra movers there to help that, help get it in the crates, get it into, out of the room, whatever it might be.
Will we have similar accommodations as we did before for teachers?
Yes. We have had, and Keith is in communication with our union leadership too, around that. I've had some conversations and as David has said, we recognize that in many cases, this is the fifth summer. So, we are working through that process.
And then, also for the return, because I think that was also a concern before?
Always a challenge, right? Because, you know, it's not HGTV summer construction and so it's all done in two weeks. So, you know how this goes. We're pushing to the last moment. We're all on top of each other in those last couple of weeks, trying to get everybody in there. And so, it is a huge challenge and it'll be a huge challenge this summer as well.
And to Jason's theme, have we had, I'm sorry, Jason. I just wanted to say it was your theme because you asked the questions earlier.
Yes.
Have we had conversations and the teachers are aware that this is a process as to forthcoming?
Yeah, so we'll speak to that. So, once this is approved, our next step, we'll start our roadshow. Kevin and I did this last year as well. And then, we'll, we'll be going to each building. We'll kind of, we'll go through those. We'll have meetings with our principals as well. And then, as we get closer, we'll have probably every other week or even weekly meetings, as last summer we did weekly meetings with the principals to make sure they're full and tuned with, kind of communicating, coordinating all those, those pieces and components. And then, just making sure we're doing kind of care checks with our teachers, making sure they're, they've got the things they need to get this taken care of.
But they are, they have been aware of it because they're all aware that the flooring is the next iteration of bond projects and that the necessity from that is that we have to move, we have to move for the last summer. And we're hopeful to move them back in and settle into our learning spaces as this is the last renovations for.
I'm knocking on wood.
For now.
Open so.
Why do we have four different, so, one's moving the crates, one's at Conant, IA and Way, so why four different companies? And then my other question is, what does internal moves mean?
So, I'll speak to the internal moves, and then I'll let you talk about the internal moves. So, that's what I was saying, Paul, like, you're moving from Conant to Eastover, we need to move your classroom there. So, for example, we're not...
Not at Eastover, I mean?
You're 5th grade teacher, okay? And so, you're gonna move. We're gonna make sure all of your stuff, so that's all your curriculum materials, your support material, all that stuff, gets moved to the right spot. The other parts of the moves are just actually moving it into a trailer that says Room 114, we're moving it right back into Room 114. Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, no, that answers that, but why four different companies?
So, the four different companies, one we looked at for technology support this year, which is Capricorn Diversified Systems. So, as part of the move out of the classroom, the preparation of the classroom, the tear up of the floor and the dust and everything, we like to hire Capricorn that will secure the front monitors on all the classrooms, secure them from dust. They're gonna remove the wireless access points and clean up all the technology, crate it up, label it, and we're gonna move it to another part of the school. So, that's for that work. As far as the crates, we pulled the crates out of the movers' responsibility this year because we have better control, plus we're not paying additional overhead to run it through a mover, so it's a cost savings to the district. And as far as having two movers this year versus one last year, with the amount of work and the scope of work and the time that it needs to be done, one mover cannot execute, one mover cannot execute everything that we need in a short timeframe. For example, school's out Friday the 13th at half a day, we're gonna start the protection of the flooring and everything on Friday. We will be there Saturday morning at 8:00 with two movers at two different sets of schools, with probably 8 to 15 guys at each school with semi-trucks to get a head start for the construction to begin on Monday.
All right, so you're saying it just wasn't practical from one mover to do all those schools? And then from a cost perspective, is it more to have two different moving companies?
Actually, if Premier Locations was the lowest overall mover in cost, they were $398,000. By bundling them together with Palmer, taking the best of both, we're actually saving the district almost $60,000.
Along those lines, though, with the multiple contracted entities, is there a coordination between them with regard to responsibilities and liabilities in their respective contracts? So, they all know what they're liable for, what they're contracted to do?
And yes, and we also carry insurance on top of that for that. So, if we do have, you know, someone drops a trumpet or something, we can take care of that.
We carry additional insurance. Typical insurance for the mover is 60 cents a pound. So, we carry, it's like so many dollars per thousand declared, so we carry a couple hundred thousand dollars of declared value so we can get full replacement via if anything that's broken or missed.
It seems like a lot. Where are we storing this?
Michelle, you mentioned your backyard, and so, we're gonna, we've got some tractor trailers that we're gonna...
If you don't mind the train.
Yeah, no, never mind the train. No, we have, a couple of different things we're doing. So, the much more sensitive stuff, as much as we can, we're gonna try to keep that internally to the building. So, for example, just generally, you know, we might move it into a gym or media center or something like that. But the vast majority will need to go into trailers. And part of the project this summer is where we have it a phase, so we're not gonna keep them all the way to August. We will, working with Barton Mallow, let's say the back half of Eastover gets done, we'll start moving things in right away. And so, we're gonna be, and that's why we need huge coordination, and Kevin's done a great job last summer as well, knowing, hey, this truck here is all the, that back, you know, lane X or whatever it is, and we know unload just that one. So, that's the big kind of that coordination. But it will be in semi-trucks sitting on-site or off-site, depending on the situation, because some of those sites are kind of tight.
All right. Mm-hmm. It's the last summer of this, right?
I hope so. Well, I say that, it's not really true. We're gonna have some other moves, right? We're gonna have, like, the robotics, we're gonna have transportation. There'll be some odds and ends here. But when we talk about the impact really to our classroom and our classroom teachers, this should be the vast majority done.
All right. Is there a motion?
I've moved the Board of Education to award physical moving services in the total amount of $523,850, as outlined in the proposal.
Second. Is there a second? Pardon me?
Support. Do I have to read the whole thing? No, okay.
We're good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, motion passes 6-0. Thank you for all that information. All right, now on to E, the Request to Adopt the Bloomfield Hills High School New Courses and Course Changes for the 2025, 2026 school year. This is being presented by Sarah Fairman, our Executive Director of Learning Services.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to the new board members. It'll be very fun today for the first thing for new curriculum. This is being brought to you as part of our policies. District Board Policy is that new courses are brought to you as you are in charge over a curriculum. The curriculum that is being brought to you tonight is coming from the teachers and the students at Bloomfield Hills High School, and it's meant to reflect both what the students are interested in, trends we're seeing in education, and also post-secondary goals for our students. Secondarily, we are really looking at having a way to have students be able to talk about controversial topics in ways that are comfortable and in spaces that, especially as they're juniors and seniors in high school, that allow them to have a deeper understanding of the world that they're about to enter on their own. So, just going through the first couple of courses, I'm sure you've pulled them up in front of you. The first one is AP Research. AP Research is a second-year course. The first course is AP Seminar. That was a course that is offered to juniors. It is basically a two-year research project. The seminar teaches them all of the different ways that you can do research within disciplines. And then the second project, or the second year of that, is actually doing a full action-based project, research-based piece that you submit. It is submitted to AP for scoring, so that is called the research proportion of it. And then in the end, they get something called the capstone. If they do both courses and pass both, then they earn the AP capstone, which is equivalent in many ways to an IB Extended Essay and Theory of Knowledge-type course. So, it's giving them a different pathway into the same space. The second course on our list is Marketing School, the School Store Operations. Dr. Dan Hartley is not here, but if you have not been to the high school, he is very proud of the perch, which is the IB, not the IB, the BHHS Spirit Store. And that will be operating by our marketing department that comes out of the DECA. They take Principles of Marketing in 10th or 11th grade, and then the next year, they would take the marketing, the school store operations. So, it's a way for them to have actual hands-on, practical knowledge within the building and within the school day in terms of their marketing. History Through Film is a social studies elective for 11th and 12th graders. It is a year-long course. There's a very lengthy description here. The teacher waxes poetics about what they want to achieve. But in many ways, the world we're living in right now is really difficult to understand at times. And sometimes through film, you're able to have students connect differently to the curriculum and to the content. So, they would be using film as a way to study basically the nuances of the world, how the world has changed, how it's impacted humanity, and also maybe even the environment. So, that is for 11th and 12th graders. The next course on there is a general physical science course. As you're aware, NGSS are the science standards that we are to teach that require, and then the Michigan Mayor Curriculum requires three years of science, biology, chemistry, and physics. What we have seen is that there are times, because the physics and chem is so math-heavy in terms of, you know, just geometry and above, that students who have maybe had a difficult time with algebra find the math then to make access to the actual science concepts maybe not the easiest pathway for them to go. This course is designed to help them boost their confidence in that area and also cover those required content. So, they would have their chemistry and physical science or physics done if they take this course, and then they can go on to their third-year science course, which could be any of the pathology courses, the vet science courses, all those other courses, and not have to actually go through physics in the 11th grade if they didn't want to. We don't anticipate a lot of students taking this, but that is a nice place for those students where that math that is involved in both chemistry and physics can be overwhelming and also make that content not accessible to them. We are excited to offer the IB Global Politics SL and HL. SL means standard level, that's a one-year course. HL is a two-year level, two-year course, it's a higher level. Generally, you get college credit for HL, much like an AP-type course. We have seen over the years a decline in students who are taking the IB history courses. IB history courses by design have to be at least 20 years past and further back. And so, what we're finding from our students is that they are much more interested in understanding the world as it is today, but beyond a current events-type course, but have that depth of knowledge. Our most popular history course in our department is IB World Religions, and that's a one-year course. Students after taking that course are looking for that second course that actually builds upon that as well. Here's a course that can actually do that for them, where it's taking what they have learned about the IB World Religions and then also now understanding the contemporary political landscape throughout the world with these classes. These classes do focus on power, sovereignty, and international relations, human rights, development, and peace and conflict. That aligns really well with our board policy of talking about the review and discussion of controversial issues that have political, economic, and social significance. That class really captures that completely. And then IB Language and Literature. If you're aware of AP, AP has AP Lit and Lang and AP Lang and Comp. AP Lang and Comp is generally a junior-level course. It teaches you how to use language, not in terms of just literary analysis, but also in terms of advertisements, influential, web, everything else. Our HL course that we have for IB right now for English is only literary criticism. And that tends to be, again, a bit of a gatekeeper for students getting into IB courses or being a full diploma student. So, we have offered to put in this IB Language and Literature course. This is a much more common course to find in IB school versus IB literature course. I meant to go back and say the IB Global Politics, the IA itself introduced that this year. They're hoping for one section, I believe they have three. It's become a very popular course over there, and the students are very successful in it. So, those are the new courses that we have. In the packet that's in front of you are just additional changes that are happening that doesn't require board approval, but always good to inform. And I can go through those if you want, or if you want to talk about the first courses first. Yep.
Oh, sorry, I just, okay. So, thank you. I'm really excited to see research as an option for our students. But I have a question. So, if they get to select their topic, is this also a possibility for them to focus and have a science or a math credit if that is the research direction?
So, currently, the first of that two coursing is in our biomedical pathways. We used it as a pilot there to see how that research went. As we expand it and have more teachers who are trained and may be able to do that course, yes, we would expand that to other disciplines. Right now, it is based in science because it actually matched up perfectly with the IB Pathways, Biomedical Pathways course. The idea behind that is that you don't have to be then an IB student to do IB research, that you can be the AP student, which is partly why AP also put that in there was to, you know, they keep raising the bar to match each other as they go through. We, of course, would expand it to other disciplines.
And then, for the general physical science course, so, if you take, by all your freshman and then this course in your second year, is there, you said there's a natural progression for them to still take physics or chemistry?
Correct. If they choose to, or they could take another, they have to take three years of science. So, by doing this class, we are making sure that they have hit the NGSS standards for both chem and physics without as much depth. I think you get into those regular courses, and then they could go into that third-year science that they're required to take by MMC. So, instead of, there are times that we, for a student who has difficulty in math, and then we keep putting more math in front of them, here's a chance for them to demonstrate their love of science without having to also show their, I guess, acumen in all higher mathematical areas. We don't anticipate that being a large group, but we felt that that was a nice place to make sure that we give pathways for all of our students. Additionally, I should say that Bowers Academy itself cannot offer courses that aren't in the coursebook at Bloomfield Hills High School. So, this is a class that you'll also see at Bowers, same as that film and history course.
With regard to that film and history course, and all of these seem really exciting and interesting, that one seems to be almost a passion project for a teacher? Does it belong to a specific teacher who intends to teach it? Because it seems like a very complex, complicated...
It came out of the department. I think what happened was a teacher in the, so, all these come through the department without a name attached. I'm sure that that teacher was passionate in their department and then waxed poetic in the writing, but the department itself approved it, and basically, they said, there are enough of us here that could teach this. It's, you have to be really careful that you don't have singletons where only one teacher can teach one class because that really messes up the entire, the entire schedule. And if that person happens to leave, then you have a class. So, there was, there was a passion, and then there was collaboration, is the best way I can phrase that.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was hoping.
Yeah, it gets concerning. And it's a perfect-sized high school in terms of this, that we're big enough that we can offer more than one section of classes, but we're not so big that kids get lost in that space.
I have a question, just going down to, so, one of the things which is important, but it's, you said you've updated the course description. So, the capstone, sort of the internship program, so what's changed there?
Instead of calling, you start to run into issues when you call something an internship because there is a work-based placement rules and requirements that are way beyond what we were doing. But by calling it an exploration, therefore, we're not requiring them that they have work. We can help them get a workspace, place that they can go to work outside of us, but the parameters behind that are different. So, by renaming it and actually preparing them more in terms of their resumes, having them do some shadowing, where before, we didn't allow shadowing, that you had to be in one place only, but you could have some different experiences. That was what we were looking for with that internship versus saying that it is a work-based employment.
So, it's not in, so, yeah, so my understanding, it was an internship, so it's not now, so it's just...
No, we switched it to, we switched it to exploration, so they could do an, like, it could be an internship, but versus requiring it from every student.
So, some students can just shadow and then...
Yeah.
Whatever, okay.
We're working more on developing the student into what they need to be when they go into the workplace versus always worrying about what that workplace is. Does that help?
No, I understand. I think it's hard to place all students, so if it's a couple of days shadowing versus, I understand that.
One of these semesters, I can't remember which one, we have 90 students in that. That's on top of trying to find, to place our biomed pathway students as well. That's a lot of leaning on the community, so.
Question on that. So, and I know this has been like a four or five years. What are now all of our different pathways?
So, currently, this is a great conversation. We just had a conversation with the high school, was it sometime during all the chaos of school closing? So, the pathway as defined is the biomedical pathway. We are looking to redefine our other pathways that will align with the Michigan Economicals for the next 20 years. So, Todd and I, along with the high school administration, are looking at an engineering pathway, business finance pathway, and then the vet science pathway, obviously, because you want to take advantage of the fact that we are one of the only districts in the state that has a vet science program. So, those are the pathways we're starting to develop, but we're looking at them in terms of what Michigan is saying they want from our students coming out. So, we're looking at CTE pathways also in terms of, there's a robotics one that's in there. There's an incredible engineering one that's coming out of CTE where it's a really hands-on project. So, those are the pathways we are starting to look at.
So, the only one we really have to find now is the biometric?
As we call it a pathway, for sure, yes.
And we're looking at business, engineering, vet...
Vet, architecture, and the biomed, but also there's the psychology in there. So, one of the things that we, I think it's been difficult to get across to parents is that we actually have a lot of pathways, but the way we've presented our course catalog is by department. And so, they're not recognizing that these clusters of classes actually prepare you, like, oh, you want to go into possibly legal studies. Well, we have a civil rights course. We also have our IB, now our politics, global politics course. So, we do prepare you if you want to look into that pre-law-type space, but we don't call it pre-law. So, we want to start packaging our classes better so students can better understand that there are actual pathways that are in there that we haven't put that name on yet.
I have a question regarding the History Through Film course. So, I have three questions. There's three parts. First of all, who is in charge of selecting the films that will be part of the curriculum? If you don't mind, let me get through all three first. Who's gonna select them? What's their criteria for the selection? And what, is there any sort of preview of that list provided at the course selection offering?
Yes. So, what we'll do is, once, because we haven't put it in the catalog yet, so, once we put it in the catalog, then we will get together with the department. We would use a process that's quite similar to how we select our books for the literature department, which is, what is the, best way, what's the authors and... department, which is, what is the, best way, what's the author's intent? What is the perspective it's providing? Is it historically accurate? Would be a different version. And/or if it's not historically accurate, what was the intent behind that inaccuracy? And then that would be vetted by the department first, and then by building administration, and then by LST. That will also be in front of parents before they start the course.
The list of which films would be shown?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we might do it, since it's a pilot first year, we might do first the first semester, and then here's the second semester, because we'll want to see how it goes. And also, you think you're going to have things available, but we all know how Netflix and everything else thinks, all of a sudden, things move off. So we would want to make sure we have a long list of what we're going to offer, and then narrow it down as we get closer.
Okay.
So, but previews and/or, I don't want to say Rotten Tomatoes, but a Rotten Tomatoes-like version of what is in there, so people will be aware.
So there won't be any surprises if a student signs up and then the syllabus is provided on day one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I have a question under the lead-in section.
Now, did you say engineering is one of the pathways that is forthcoming?
So the problem that you run into with engineering is that they're very particular about, the state's very particular about who is certified to teach it. So we had an engineering teacher who has left. We have now, so we're hiring another engineering teacher, so we're changing that course reflect the certification of that teacher. Project Lead the Way is our curriculum, which is a fantastic curriculum, and it's been proven, but what we have found in our training is that we were trying to put two Project Lead the Way units into one semester, and they really should be one semester each. So we got rid of one engineering course, but really added another semester to a different engineering course.
So you're removing them from the options, but reserving the right to bring them back when necessary?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to make sure this doesn't mean deletion like forever gone?
Yeah, the certification of teachers is a challenge, and I would say specifically in the areas of finance, engineering, architecture, because generally, those people are not teaching.
Right. And there's a high demand for their traditional?
There's a high demand for them. There's less of those kids, or less students going into those programs in school, finance there always are.
Interesting.
But, so it's an interesting challenge, and then if you add CTE to it, that's a whole nother challenge. So we are working really well with Oakland Schools and their CTE program, and then also what we can offer ourselves. So we can do a lot of the marketing and business because we have that certification in our actual teachers. It's only when you run into engineering that you run into some other challenges.
Okay. Thank you.
If anyone, you want to retire and come back and be an engineer?
I don't think we have a motion on this yet.
No.
I move the Board of Education approve the changes of Bloomfield Hills High School course offerings for the 2025-26 school year pursuant to Board Policy 3001 as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome. Welcome to everyone.
All right, moving on to F, the request to approve First Amendment to Cooperative Agreement between Bloomfield Hills Schools and Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission Pine Lake Park. Superintendent West.
Yes, so this is a carryover from the conversation in, I think, December, November or December. And just to bring Jason and Lindsay up to speed, we have a master agreement between the West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission and the school district for the, essentially, lease of Pine Lake Park, and we are currently operating under that agreement. They came to us and asked, they really want to expand that by five years, and in doing so, they have certain requirements within the master agreement to present their progress to the Board of Education, and they did that in November, I believe it was November. And we had a robust discussion. They outlined where they're at with their master planning, which is in your packet as well, and it was requested that they expand by five years, given some of the delays that they've experienced already with the agreement and their planning process. So we came to the board in December and asked for, recommended that we modify the agreement in that way, just simply to expand from 25 to 30 years. And it was tabled at that time to go back and kind of specify what is going to occur. So we did use legalese and general legal parameters to specify the part of the agreement that needed modified, not only the five years, but also Part B, which specified what was required by the commission in order to fulfill the master plan and kind of a timeline. So what we did in talking with them is, we used loose language to provide general parameters that they would still fulfill their obligations within 18 months of the signed amendment, and that, those requirements are detailed in the master plan presentation that was provided to the Board of Education. So for instance, they phased the plan over the course of several years, and you can see that phasing in the master planning process document. So we are asking essentially for an expansion of the current agreement, of the original agreement, from 25 years to 30 years, in which they will work toward their master planning process, and that master plan is subject to change based on resources and availability. But given the agreement and the intentions, I believe it's in the best interest of the school district to entertain the increase of the five years in this partnership. If anything, I know we had some conversations regarding it.
Well, in the agenda, we have linked the original agreement, the first red line, red line First Amendment, which calls out the five-year extension, but on paragraph two, it shows a modification to paragraph three BI in the original agreement. We are now, as opposed to the original agreement, which lists out each of the items, it's now pointing back to the master plan.
Yes.
So I'm within the master plan PDF, PowerPoint presentation, I'm on page 17, and I see red line originally Phase One, in the Phase One column, it said Playground 2025. Now it says, now there's red years under Phases Two, Three, and Four. Those did not exist, or is this a modification to the master plan as well? Because they're red, so I'm wondering if this is a modification to the master plan, or if the master plan that was signed off on was, had these dates outlined in red? Because I'm trying to figure out why the Phase One doesn't.
Why, I'm not sure. I completely understand.
Yeah, it's confusing. So I'm trying to figure out if West Bloomfield Parks provided a modified master plan to us, because I'm trying to figure out why these dates are in red.
I believe.
Phase One is only in black. Phases Two, Three, and Four, the years are now in red.
I believe that as a result of our November meeting, in which we asked for a little bit more detail and specificity to the?
Right.
To the year, so I believe that would be a modification.
So we need, if that's the case, and we need to confirm if that's true, we need to call out that this is a modified plan and not the original one that was signed. Because the original one, I think, only called out 2025 for Phase One, and then I think there were dates missing for Phases Two through Four.
Yes, this is certainly a modification, because, take tennis courts, I think tennis courts were one of the things that came up. In the original plan, it outlined that the tennis courts would be taken care of in the first 18 months. This is indicating that Phase Four would include the tennis courts. So it is the modifications, and that's why it points back to the master plan.
So I just think we need to call out that this is a modified master plan and not the original that was agreed to.
It's amended master.
So, a simple addition to the language that says within 18, let's see. Agreement, the commission must begin planning and implementation capital improvements as outlined in the amended Pine Lake Master Plan.
Yes, because the current one that we're looking at is dated October 24. That just, the front page just needs to be, say, updated as of this date, and then we can include this in the appendix of the amendment.
And we need to reference that in the two BI.
Correct.
Language.
Yeah.
If it's included as an addendum, we should just switch out the addendum. My suggestion would be in the amendment, it specifies the date of the master plan, so that way, there's, with specificity identified, so that way, if it changes in the future, we know which one it is.
Yeah, and just include it, right, attach it to it.
Do we get anything other than certainty as to timing in exchange for the additional five years? Are they expanding the give on the master plan?
They provided more specificity on the timing.
Okay.
So that page 17 on the master plan, that's where, so originally, they committed to Phase One happening in 2025, and now they've committed for Phases Two through Four. Two will happen in '25 or '26, Three will happen in '26 or '27, and Four will be '27 through '29.
So are they accelerating?
That did not previously exist, that specificity.
Okay. So with the advantage, the quid pro quo, what we get from giving them the additional five years is basically?
More clarity on the time.
Specificity that they're front-loading some of these things, so we don't have to wait so long to get them.
Correct.
Besides, we've already, in the previous edition, we've already exceeded a year, and they haven't started, so.
Right. I mean, it feels bad to do it twice, but we want to get it right. I mean, the first time it was because of that. Now, we just want to be clear that we're pointing to this new master plan and little details, but I think it's important.
I think we have what we need.
Yeah.
We just need to, modification to this.
I would hate to come back to it. I think we can modify it.
To include the modifications?
To include the modifications that were discussed here.
Yeah, we don't need to table until the next month.
And that modification would be specifying the date of the amended master plan, so we know.
Right.
I think that works.
Including the, regenerative title?
I'm just trying to figure out, like, what we need to say, yeah. But if anybody else wants to take a go at it?
Typing it out.
Okay.
Just say to include the amendments presented.
Just give me a second here.
So instead of saying "ask" presented, to say "to include"?
I move the Board of Education approve the First Amendment and amendments as discussed to the cooperative agreement, as discussed in this meeting, to the cooperative agreement between Bloomfield Hills Schools and the Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission.
You didn't specify what the amendment was.
As presented.
Oh, as presented, okay.
As presented, as presented on the board table now.
And as presented at the board table, we agree that that is to clarify Page One of the master plan, to update the date, and will include this as an addendum to the First Amendment. Okay, I think that covers it.
As well as include amended before Pine Lake Master Plan in the agreement.
Yes, perfect. Okay, so that was a move to amend the motion, so we have a second to amend the motion. Any discussion on the amendment of the motion? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, motion passes six zero. Now, is there, are you going to be able to repeat that?
I move the Board of Education approve the First Amendment with the additional amends discussed at this board table as presented to the cooperative agreement between Bloomfield Hills Schools and the Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission as presented.
Just a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, motion passes six zero. We still need some time? All right, we are going to take a 10-minute recess before we move on to G.
We are ready, we are done with our recess, we are back in session. Moving on to item G, Board Governance and District Operations Overview. This will be presented by Kevin Sutton of Miller Johnson. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a long evening, but I like to joke, you know, we've gotten through the appetizers, now we get to the entree of governance and district operations and policy and what could be more scintillating than that topic. I think everybody, we got the slide deck, everybody's got the slide deck, I think, and we'll have it up on the screen, obviously, as well. So our agenda this evening, in the time we have together, is a lot of talking about the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent and the Board of Education. We're going to look, we'll move through the deck, and we'll talk about legal authority. We'll talk about roles and responsibilities. There's a wonderful tool that MASB has put together called the Governance Clock, and we'll look at that. We'll talk in general and with specifics about superintendent-board relations. We'll talk about governance standards and certainly questions and discussion, if not during the presentation, which I welcome, we can certainly do at the end as well. I guess before we sort of set sail into the substance of the PowerPoint deck, there's a reason this topic is so important. And I've tried to draw on a number of authorities, be it the National Association of School Boards, the Michigan Association of School Boards, and other entities that work with both school districts and superintendent groups and individual superintendents, to try to get the most accurate picture of these, I don't want to say it roles, but roles and responsibilities, because it is such a vital component of what you all are doing. And I know we've got some new board members who are new to this excitement of being part of the Board of Education. It's a tough job. It's a difficult job. There are going to be challenging moments, there's going to be challenging situations, and we see, you know, the political climate in the country is different than it was 15, 20 years ago, and we're having a lot of issues now that are coming at the local level to school boards. And so being able to have, and we're going to talk a lot about transparency, we're going to talk about collaboration, we're going to talk about, yeah, authority under the law, but really working hand in hand. And I think as you, as we go through the slides, as we talk about some of these principles that are articulated by these various organizations, you know, sort of at the heart of all of them is collaboration, and collaboration between the administration and the Board of Education to navigate the difficult and sometimes choppy waters that you're going to confront as board members. And so with that mindset, we will sort of dive in and, thinking initially about understanding and identifying what the respective roles of the Board of Education and the superintendent are, and there it is, right? Just from my little word cloud, the big word is collaboration, and that is, again, consistent with what we're going to talk about throughout the presentation. I start, the National School Board Association has a lot of great resources for boards and districts to take a look at, but they sort of talk about these four major thrusts of board leadership, and thrusts is their word, but I kind of like it, because it's just debulous enough and nonspecific enough to say, these are the things that they really see board leadership, the board taking a leadership position on and really advocating for, and that being sort of the vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. And within each of those constructs, sort of articulating, you know, what is it that we're looking to do with the board as leaders, leaders of the school district, in achieving those things? And obviously, creating a shared vision under the vision prong. What is Bloomfield Hills Schools about? What are we doing? What are we trying to achieve? We're only going to be able to do that when there's, again, that collaboration and shared vision with administration, who goes and executes that vision on behalf of the board. Structure, do we have the structure in place? It's great to have a vision, but do we have the things that we need? Do we have the resources that we need in order to be able to achieve what we all want to have happen within the district? Holding each other accountable, do we have accountability structures? And lastly, I think really vitally important for members of the board, advocacy. And, you know, I think that's a component of board leadership that doesn't get talked about maybe enough, is that when we've got a shared vision, when we've got a structure to do it, when we're holding each other accountable, really getting out and being a cheerleader for the district and advocating and championing that vision that's been articulated, because when everyone is, I hate to use the metaphors, like rowing in the same direction, but when we're all rowing in the same direction, it's easier to accomplish those lofty goals that we have as a district. So we'll talk sort of initially here on a somewhat more granular level, because it's sort of easy to say, well, there's general principles, and it's collaboration, and all that good stuff. What does the revised school code tell us about public school districts, about the role of the board legally? And then in contrast, we'll look at what it says about the superintendent as well. We know that under Section 11A of the revised school code, we talk about general powers school district, and that's obviously what the Bloomfield Hills School District is, is a general power school district. And 11A is written in a very broad, sort of all-encompassing way. What you can sort of extract from the statute is that the responsibility of the district, and therefore the board, which governs the district, is to make sure we're educating students, that we're providing for the safety and welfare of students who are in our care on a daily basis. Issues relative to school property, how that property is Issues relative to school property, how that property is maybe acquired, maintained, disposed of. Determined matters relating to school employees and contractors is obviously a very broad heading about what the role of the board is, and we'll talk about that in some greater specificity as we move on here. And then making joint agreements and cooperative agreements, again, a very broad statement, we think mostly in the board context of approval of collective bargaining agreements with our employee units, so on and so forth. So under that heading of general powers districts, some very generic and large, big-picture things that the board is responsible for. And then as we sort of move outside of eleven A, and we look at other provisions within the revised school code, if you've never had the pleasure of perusing the revised school code, it's pretty voluminous, there's a whole lot there, but some of the highlights that you see about board responsibilities as you go through the entire code, setting the curricula and courses taught in the schools. The revised school code speaks to the core curriculum, the core academic curriculum that the school puts forth, and the board playing an integral role in approving that. Obviously, employing a superintendent is one of the chief responsibilities of the board, and obviously, the board has been through that process relatively recently. Adopting a budget, we got to make sure that the money is allocated to do the things that we need to do. Deciding whether or not to furnish transportation for pupils. And every time I read that bullet, sometimes I get some response from the community, like, are they going to take away transportation? No, no, no one's saying that. That's just one of the things that the revised school code talks about, is a prerogative of the board to decide. And then negotiating with the employee unions regarding terms and conditions of employment. Within that specific bullet, there's nuance to that, you know, very often, it'd be very unusual for the board as a whole to go and negotiate a contract. Usually, the board nominates the superintendent to handle negotiations, and that's addressed in policy. But when we look at the revised school code, it does say more than just, it's your job to hire a superintendent and adopt policies. There's a lot more to it. And these are some of the key things that the revised school code calls out as those obligations. As we pivot, in terms of the legal requirements of the superintendent, you'll see the list is not quite as long, but the bullets are equally sort of broad. Section twelve twenty-nine of the revised school code tells us that the district shall employ a superintendent. That means that it's mandatory. Shall means it's compulsory, not permissive. The superintendent shall not be a member of the board for reasons that are obvious, has to have a written contract, can't exceed five years. That's the groundwork that they give us. There's not a whole lot of there, just you have to have someone, and you can only employ them for an initial contract period of five years. Section twelve forty-six of the revised school code gives us the most on-point description of the superintendent's legal responsibilities, administering instructional programs. And, you know, those three words obviously are remarkably broad. We think about everything that this school district is doing in some form or fashion is administering an instructional program. Well, what about the buses? Well, the buses are there to help administer the instructional program. Well, what about athletics? Well, a robust athletic program is part of administering an instructional program. And so, all of the components of what you do as a school district really fall under that very broad umbrella of administering instructional programs, and that's about as specific as the statute, the revised school code gets with respect to superintendent legal responsibility. So if we sort of use those as the legal foundations of what the board and what the superintendent do, how do we sort of then maybe break down in a little bit more granular fashion beyond some of those sort of very general, somewhat vague statements, what the respective roles and responsibilities are? And so, these next few slides, we break these things down a little bit more. Top of the list, you know, recruiting, hiring, and evaluating the performance of the superintendent. And folks may have different opinions. I've always been of the opinion that it's the most vital job that the board does, is having that chief executive to administer those instructional programs, to run the day-to-day operations of the district, and someone that the board trusts, someone the board believes in, someone the board wants to collaborate with, and is willing to evaluate their performance accordingly. I think that is right at the top of the list in terms of the board's specific responsibilities. Not far behind is the bullet right beneath that, establishes policy for the district and shares in policy development. And so, you know, if you grabbed the average person on the street and said, you know, what does the Board of Education do? Most of them would say, well, they hire a superintendent, and they pass policies, right? And there are certainly more things than that, but most people highlight those two things because they are two of the most essential functions that the board addresses. We've talked about hiring a quality superintendent. The responsibility for policy cannot be understated. When I talk about policy with boards, I liken it to the foundational principles on which the district is built. You know, we think of ancient Greece, ancient Rome, those great big buildings with pillars. That really is what policy is. Policy articulated by the board as representatives of the community. You are articulating those foundational principles. This is who we are, this is what we stand for, this is what we want to be, now go make it happen, right? Is the call to administration, and we know that administration will oftentimes draft administrative regulations, administrative guidelines, what I maybe call the blocking and tackling, or the X's and O's of giving operational enactment to the principles that are articulated by the board. And so, those two are at the top of the list because they are so vitally important to the day-to-day operation of the school district. We then move into goals and visions, right? The district vision is translated into long- and short-term goals. The board establishes the structure to accomplish the vision and periodically evaluates the results. I think that's very consistent with those four thrusts from N S B A that we looked at at the outset. Certainly, responsibilities for budgeting, making sure that the district and the board are being good fiscal agents, good fiduciaries of the district, making sure we establish what our funding priorities are. Are they meeting the goals as part of that vision that you've laid out as a board in communicating with administration? And as I alluded to earlier, last on the list, approving the recommended curriculum and texts based on the standards, goals, and policies established by the board, and then being active in that in terms of evaluating curriculum as it relates to student assessment results. And, you know, I like to pause there because what that doesn't mean is that the board needs to be out on an island assessing things on its own. There's a reason that the administrative team has hired experts, educational experts, secondary and elementary, that come and report to you on, here's how we're doing on assessments, here's what we're looking at from an assessment standpoint, here's an area we think we need to get stronger, here's an area that we think we can buttress, and really, coming to the board and saying, partner with us on that to help us achieve those objectives, because that presumably is part of our long-term vision and our long-term goals. But wait, there's more. We sort of have a second policy, our second bullet that talks about policies, adopting policies governing salaries and salary schedules, terms and conditions of employment. I would say those are probably less policies and more collective bargaining agreements, certainly when those agreements are negotiated with the various employee unions, they come before the board for approval, and that's vitally important to the continued smooth and successful operation of the school district. Facility needs, looking at what our facility needs are. Do we need capital projects? Do we need construction? Do we need less? Do we need more? The last, you know, fifteen, twenty years in Michigan have been an interesting time, particularly in southeast Michigan, right? With respect to districts that have tried to right-size based on the facility needs that they have. If I, if I'm not mistaken, Bloomfield Hills High School, very good example of that a few years back, in terms of looking at what the community needs were and addressing that from a board standpoint. Here's that word, policies, again, adopting policies governing school-community relations, advocates for the public school system, and remains responsive to community ideas and needs. Yes, more policy, but I think what that is about is looking at policy through a lens of not only establishing our foundational principles and what we stand for and who we are, but how do we engage our community? How do we engage our community stakeholders so they feel invested in what we're doing? Obviously, everyone who's at this table is up here to serve the community, and so finding pathways that enable the community members to feel engaged in what we do. Meetings like this are a great way to do that. It's not always the most exciting way to do that, but there are other ways to do that, and creating those pathways for our community is vitally important. And then finally, evaluating the performance of the board and providing feedback for personal leadership development. And I think that's a really important one, and it's a hard one maybe to talk about, because you're talking about collectively being reflective about what you all are doing and how it's going, and holding each other in the most professional and polite way of saying it accountable for how you're conducting business, how you collaboratively are working with one another to hopefully then collaborate with the superintendent. And, you know, I don't think I'm telling any tales out of school. We all pick up the newspaper or whatever your source of news is. That's been a challenge with some school boards around the metro area and around the state, and certainly nationally, where it's been difficult at times, difficult operational paradigms amongst board members. And I can tell you, having seen a lot of those situations firsthand, the vision gets lost, and the momentum, the inertia towards the goals and the vision that the district has somehow gets lost in the details. So and so, it's on there, it's not just another bullet, it's an important one, not only to be self-reflective as a group, be self-reflective individually, and then to be constantly evaluating, are we doing, are we getting the same sort of reciprocity, reciprocation from administration and the superintendent in terms of that dialogue, in terms of that collaboration, in terms of that support? I think those are vitally important aspects. If we spend a couple of slides sort of breaking down what the board is doing in a more granular way, we have to do the same thing with the superintendent. And beyond sort of administering instructional programs, superintendent managing operations in central office, coordinating and overseeing efforts of all schools within the district, works towards meeting district and superintendent goals that are established by the board. And so, you know, there's a lot of text in that bullet, but I think it's important that those things are tied, because it'd be really easy to stop with the first part and say, he manages central office and coordinates and oversees the efforts within all schools. But there's more to it than that, right? It is, is the work that's being done working towards the goals that the district has established, that the board has established, maybe that have been individually established for the superintendent. Are we doing that? Are we heading in that direction? Ultimately, that's what we want to see. Advising the board on policy development, need and impact, and is responsible for creating and implementing administrative procedures to carry out the requirements of each policy. So this is in furtherance of what I was just speaking about a minute ago. Yes, the board has the vitally important function of drafting policy. Should the board do that in a vacuum? Probably not. Having those discussions about what's happening on the front lines, what are you seeing in the buildings, what things from a governance standpoint might your district leadership need to see, want to see from a policy standpoint to help them execute the vision better, right? In other words, how can we, as the board, help you with that? It's incumbent upon the superintendent to have that communication, to say, what I really need, or what I think we really need, is this. Doesn't mean the board necessarily has to agree or has to adopt it as presented, but having that dialogue is vitally important. And then, you know, as I mentioned, implementing administrative procedures, what I call administrative regulations, is not just about the superintendent operating by fiat. The administrative regulations need to give operational effect to the policies that you have passed, right? And if they don't, that's something that y'all need to talk about. I'll use sort of the very rudimentary example. If, you know, the board in its infinite wisdom said, the school colors in every school should be green and white, and then the superintendent went around saying, let's paint everything blue and yellow, that would be a problem. That would be an administrative directive that is inconsistent with the policy of the board, and that's obviously what we want to try to avoid. The superintendent should be assisting and advising the board in helping create those long- and short-term goals, and very importantly, should be helping establish strategy for implementation, particularly at the building levels. Should be advising, giving input on draft budgets, making budget recommendations to the board, making revisions as requested by the board, and then once finalized, administering the budget that has been adopted by the board. For those of you that have been through a budgeting process, it can be cumbersome. There's a lot to talk about, there's a lot to think about. I know Rick has had the pleasure of doing it for many years as a business director and now as a superintendent. There's a lot of things that need to be considered, but ultimately, if we go back to those four thrusts of vision and what we're trying to accomplish, making those selections, and I know they very often are hard selections to make, that help us further that vision is what we are going for. Another couple bullet points on the superintendent, recommending those courses of study and texts aligned, that align with the district vision, the district goals and objectives, and providing student assessment data for the board. So the board has all the information that it needs when it's going to approve curricula, having all of the information that you need to help make an informed decision on that needs to be presented, and that's something that the superintendent and his team need to do. And again, administrative team has educational experts who have various areas of focus to help bring that information to the board. Superintendent is recommending all personnel to be hired and is going to be responsible either directly or indirectly for the performance evaluations of those individuals. I would describe the next phrase as sort of a constant state of vigilance, analyzing, interpreting, and communicating the needs of the school system to the board. We all have things that we want to accomplish, whether we call that a vision, whether we call it goals, whether we call it an action plan, do we have the things that we need? Is it facilities? Is it people? Is it programs? Is it resources? And we have to make sure that we are, as an administrative team, being communicative with the board so the board understands. If those dialogue, if that dialogue doesn't happen, when we get to the end of the year and say, okay, we're going to go back and assess our goals, how did we do? Well, we fell short on, you know, goals one, two, and three. Why was that? Well, we never communicated the needs that we had. That's a problem, and so we want to make sure that we're doing that. If the board is articulating ways to have community stakeholders engaged, superintendent certainly can make recommendations in that regard, but also needs to be implementing what the board has put into place, make sure that in addition, all of our stakeholder groups are informed about district policies, about district programs, and about district procedures. And certainly, there are things that are policy-driven, there are things that are driven by the law. There are also just a number of amazing things that happen in the district, right? And making sure that our community members, our stakeholders, our families within the district are aware of the vast number of resources and opportunities and programs and fairs and all kinds of other wonderful things that we have is important. We're putting all of these things in place, you're putting them in place as a board. Administration is executing those because we want to engage the community, we want them to take advantage of the tremendous resources that the Bloomfield Hills Schools can offer, community members. And so, being a cheerleader, making sure that families are aware of that is vitally important. Providing administrative assistance and helping facilitate any self-assessment process the board is engaged in, I think is another important role of the superintendent. So we can click through those, and we'll get a little bit more specific over the next couple of slides. And again, it's very easy, I think, to put together, you know, a couple of slides with some bullets, and they've got some pretty generic things in there, but I really sort of challenge you to think about what that feels like and what that looks like on a day-to-day basis, what it looks like on a more granular basis. The notions extrapolated from a thirty-thousand-foot perspective makes sense, and everyone sort of nods along and says, yep, that sounds good. But when we get into the nitty-gritty of navigating a semester, navigating a school year, there are times when it's more challenging to do that and to continue to collaborate and to continue to communicate. But ultimately, as I said at the outset, everybody at this table I know has the best interest of the community at heart, so finding those pathways to communicate and have open communication, vitally important. Not to belabor the point, but we'll now look at some of these role comparisons side by side. And again, you know, in pulling these materials together, drawing a whole bunch of resources that are out there from a variety of different entities and groups, but it's kind of nice, I think, to look at them side by side as opposed to, you know, in the aggregate on a slide. So we think about setting goals, right? Superintendent's always going to be on the left, board's going to be on the right in these slides, but, you know, assisting and advising the board in creating long-term and short-term goals, based on those goals, coming up with strategies for implementation, okay? So I would call that X's and O's, blocking and tackling, the go-get-it-done, right? The board in terms of taking, setting goals, taking that vision that has been set for the district, translating that into long-term and short-term goals, this is the structure to accomplish it, and then periodically evaluating how we're doing. Not only how are we doing as a group, how is the district doing as a whole, how's the superintendent doing in executing the vision and the goals that have been set by the board for achievement? We've talked a little bit about policy already, so I put it side by side just to sort of drive the point home. The board, obviously on the right, establishing policy for the district and sharing as a partner in that policy development, but certainly incumbent on the superintendent, as noted on the left there, to advise, need and impact. And I think that need and impact is so important. You know, I think of an example that unfortunately I've seen way too much of the last handful of years, you know, the notion seven, eight years ago that we would need some sort of policy or guideline or even any sort of standard relative to vaping was something that never even registered. even registered, you know? Talking about an e-cigarette, what are you, you know, smoking in the bathroom? We just didn't have that mindset. It wasn't a problem. We weren't looking for mitigation strategies. We weren't having the number of disciplinary consequences we were having for that type of behavior. So as that sort of thing emerges, it's incumbent upon the superintendent to say, this is what I'm seeing in the schools. What would be really helpful for me in trying to address this is X, right? The devices are wonderful. They've got lots of apps on there. That also creates lots of opportunities for things that we don't necessarily want to see. Got a call a couple of years ago, there were Uber Eats, Uber Eats or Grubhub people showing up at the main office with food for kids because they can do it, because they've got an app and they wanted a pizza, so they ordered a pizza. And so that problem starts rearing its head, you don't necessarily think about having governance to try to address that. And so, being communicative about what's happening, what I'm seeing on a day-to-day basis, what you're, what Rick, as a superintendent, is hearing from his leadership team, and sharing with the board to say, you could really help us fill a gap in our governance by this type of patch, or what do you think if we develop a regulation that talks about this? I think that's really, really important and really helps the district move forward in a very positive way. Superintendent performance. We know that the superintendent's role is, again, we said, manage operations in central office, oversee the efforts of the schools within the district, work towards meeting those goals that the board has established for him. We know that in the macro sense, designating and evaluating the superintendent, recruit, hire, that's fine, but evaluating the performance of the superintendent, you know, is a, is a vitally important job that the board, a job that the board performs. And, you know, over the last handful of years, there's been some changes in Michigan law about evaluations and particularly for superintendents and what they look like and all that other good stuff, and what tool do you use, and what time of year do you do it, and is the data available, and all that stuff, right? And, you know, the superintendent being evaluated, and I won't speak for Rick, I'll speak based on my experience, being evaluated is never a comfortable experience for anybody, whether you're an engineer, a superintendent, or a teacher in a building. It's never a fun experience, but being upfront, being transparent, letting the superintendent know what the concerns are, and holding him accountable to those goals, I think, is important. That's how you move forward as an organization. And I, you know, over the years, particularly as the evaluation paradigms have changed in Michigan for teaching staff, performance evaluation is never intended to be punitive. It might feel like that. It often does feel that way to many staff, but the whole idea about evaluation is helping build someone up, a recognition that I'll do my best for the next 365 days, but I probably won't be perfect. I'm going to try, and if there's areas where I can be better, I'm not speaking for you, Rick, you might be perfect for 365 days, I don't know, but, but if I, if I, if I need to be better, let's talk about it, and let's talk about how me strengthening certain areas will add to help achieve the goals and objectives and execute the vision that we have as a school district and as a board. Budget, you know, I think, similar to the comments we've made, vitally important job for the board. Do we have our funding priorities set? Do they align with the goals that we've established? And do we appreciate and recognize the level of work that the administrative team puts in to try to put forth a budget that is executing those things? In a perfect world, the budget comes in and everybody says, wow, this is absolutely perfect, no concerns, no questions, and everybody moves on and has a wonderful day. It's not always that easy, and there will be times where there are difficult discussions. But again, encourage everybody to always be driven by the vision that we have, the goals that we've established for the district, and trying to be faithful to those things. We've talked a little bit about curriculum, but sort of just again, to drive that point home, superintendent and his team making a recommendation for courses of study, making recommendations on curricular texts that align with the district vision, that align with the goals and objectives, and is able to back that or buttress that with student assessment data for board analysis to understand why certain things are being recommended. The board ultimately having that responsibility to approve those curriculum based on the standards and goals that have, that have been established, and then continuing to review and evaluate. You know, the world is a, the world's moving quick, and so pivoting, looking at things that maybe we've done for a very long time that might need to be changed from a curricular standpoint, those are things that many boards are facing in 2025. Staffing and appraisal, we talked a little bit about this already, but, you know, the superintendent is recommending all personnel to be hired, and that is going to be either responsible directly or indirectly for those performance evaluations. The board, from a staffing perspective, is again, more, more looking at not only those approvals as of recommendations that are brought forth by the superintendent, but again, adopting those collective bargaining agreements that are presented to the board for approval and ratification, understanding that, that there will never be a circumstance in which the first time the board is hearing anything about a collective bargaining agreement is when it comes up for a vote. That is, even with the superintendent or the director of HR running the negotiation process, the board should be engaged, should be advised throughout the process, so when it comes time for an approval, there shouldn't be a whole lot of surprises once that process, that sometimes arduous process, has been fully navigated. I think my last one here on facilities, again, the board making determinations as to facility needs, communicating proposed construction plans to the community if we're in that, that wonderful situation of needing to build. And obviously, always important for the superintendent, ever vigilant in his team to be assessing, what do we need, and not only, what, not only what would be fun to have, but what do we need to achieve the goals and the vision that have been articulated by the board? What, what resources do we need that will help be able to make that happen? I mentioned the governance clock, and I can take no credit for the governance clock, though this looks like it was created like on a Apple 2G computer in 1983. This is from MASB, and I can poke fun, but really, if you really break it down, this is kind of what everything we just talked about for the last however many minutes is getting at. You've got governance on the top side of the clock, you've got management on the bottom side of the clock, and as you sort of see the various things that are around the face, I don't want to say that's the, the province or the role of the respective party on whose side of the clock it is, but to a certain extent it is, right? You see board authority at the top, superintendent authority at the bottom. And I think really important is that, right above that midline, right about where the middle of the clock would be, you know, below the line is the superintendent making recommendations for things that the board can do to support the vision, the mission of the district, and just above that line, the board having oversight of management and holding management and administration accountable for the things that they're doing, be that implementing operations, evaluating progress, so on and so forth. And again, you see at the top side of the clock, up by 12 o'clock and 2 o'clock, the board adopting vision and goals, the board adopting policies along the lines of what we've talked about. So maybe not the prettiest graphic in the world, but I think if, it might be better as a compass, if you ever lose your way, you can look at the compass, but I think the governance clock, to the credit of MASB, I think speaks at a, at a nice, high level about all of the things that we've been talking about on a more granular level.
It's missing 11 o'clock.
Well, like I said, I didn't create the clock. That's probably a sign, that's probably like a hidden message that if your board meeting has gone to 11 o'clock, you should, you should shut it down.
It's our secret to the 11.
You know, and next time anybody sees Brad Banasik, be sure to ask it. I'm sure Brad will have a great answer for that.
We're going to get 12 o'clock, Brad.
Yeah, seriously. Well, and 8 isn't exactly where it's supposed to be either, but like I said, there were, there were limitations on.
It's going wrong around 5.
Yeah. The original Apple computer could only do so many things.
We know that 9, 8, 10, but what happened to 11?
Oh. That might be the answer. That might actually be the answer. Anybody mark the time of official derailment there? Okay, good. No, 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 it's, it's, well, and look, I think, I think, and I appreciate that we can have some levity around it, and I appreciate that we can laugh. I mean, let's be honest, talking about governance is not the most scintillating topic in the world, and so the fact that we can still study the graphic and make some observations is, I think, a positive sign for everybody involved. But again, I think if, when, when, when the winds swirl, and there will always be moments where the winds are swirling, I think this is a great sort of graphical reminder of the things that we talk about and sort of the respective roles of the board and, and how they go hand-in-hand with one another. You know, one of the things that, that I like to talk about when, when we do this presentation or talk about the various roles and responsibilities is, and I apologize, there's some spacing issues that apparently didn't translate from my Mac to this PC. It's not decision maki, it's decision-making. Policy creation versus decision-making. And what I mean by that, when I sort of set it out as that equation, is, you know, I've had a number of boards ask me over the years, well, should our policies be written in a way that it's so, we've got every circumstance covered, it, 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 you know, basically you just read it and the decision is there? Or do you think it's better to draft policies in a way that give an appropriate level of latitude to administration, for example, to help navigate situations? You know, sort of what, what do you see there, Kevin? And, and, you know, what's sort of the better way of drafting policy? I, you know, I think you could, you could line up four attorneys here and ask them what they think about that, and you might get four different answers. From my lens as, as a practitioner, what I, what I, what I like is there being direction provided by the board, framework being provided by the board, and, and under most circumstances, some degree of professional autonomy or latitude to the administrative team to make decisions as appropriate. Now, again, I'm painting with a very, very broad brush. I suppose someone could come up with a scenario where us being, you know, very exacting and prescriptive in a policy about this is exactly what we're going to do, you know, might, might make sense, I'll, I'll offer that possibility. But I think generally, the way we tend to draft is to, again, have a framework, have those sort of foundational principles with a latitude, an appropriate measure of latitude and deference to the administrative team to make decisions. That is, in large part, how your policy manual now is structured, which is no coincidence since our firm drafted the policy manual, though it's certainly gone through some edits and revisions over the years at the, at the prerogative of the board. But that's, that's the framework that we generally look at. And so I offer that, not as a dispositive statement on how the board needs to think about policy or needs to draft policy, but if we're talking about one of the responsibilities of administration is coming forward and saying, hey, what I could use is some help with a policy in this space, right? What would be the best way for the board to think about that? I would tend to think that providing a framework with some degree of latitude within those boundaries for the superintendent and the administrative team to make decisions, the day-to-day operational type things, I think is good. And so I mention it only because I tend to get a lot of questions about that, about sort of what's the best way to draft policy. Those are my thoughts, and again, they're not dispositive in any way, but that is consistent with how your manual at this point is set up. And going forward, consistency is great. If we find situations where we need to be inconsistent, so be it. But that was just, I wanted to throw that little nugget in there as we were moving through the slide. So we're going to do all that, right? We know what our legal roles are. We know we've, we've looked at a more granular level about, you know, these are the responsibilities of the soup, these are the responsibilities of the board. How do we, how are we successful? How do we make that happen? How do we foster positive and productive board superintendent relations? The keys that at least one entity has come up with is full disclosure, which I'll just translate as transparency, frequent two-way communication. And I'll say on that, different boards operate differently. I've had some superintendents who are constantly chatting with every board member. I have some districts where the board just prefers the board president chat with the, the superintendent on a whole host of issues and then report back out. It really is a, a decision that, that you all have a feel for as a group. Careful planning, which I think everything we're talking about here is careful planning. Informal interaction, and, and what I mean by informal interaction is, we had a little laugh about the clock face, you know, this is, these are, these are difficult jobs. They just are. And for those of you on the board who are volunteering your time, volunteering your, your talent to support the community, you've very likely have a whole nother set of jobs that you have to do when you're not here. It's intense. It's, it's a, it's a significant commitment of your time and your effort, time away from your family to try to make the community better, to try to make the school district better. It's okay for us to laugh, it's okay for us to acknowledge the challenge that it sometime presents. There will be moments where it's exhausting, there will be moments where the board meeting goes past 11, and, and that's okay. And so I think that point is, is meant to reinforce the fact that everyone's in it together and the conditions in the boat are the same for everybody. Periodic evaluation, not only again of the superintendent as required, but periodic evaluation of yourselves as a board, how are you doing? And supporting one another, supporting one another for all of the reasons that we've talked about this evening in terms of the things that need to be done. But wait, there's more, because I found this the other day, and I, I thought this was good. This came from the Center for Public Education, which I believe is an offshoot of the National School Board Association. I didn't plug it in, but I'm going to read it. It's the eight characteristics of an effective school board. All right? So I'm going to read these quickly. Effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations and student achievement and quality instruction and define clear goals toward that vision, completely consistent with everything we said tonight, right? Vision. Effective school boards have strong shared beliefs and values about what is possible for students, their ability to learn, and of the system and its ability to teach all children at high levels. We're talking about academic achievement, but we're also talking about, is the structure in place to achieve the vision? We've talked about that as well. Effective school boards are accountability-driven, spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policies to approve, to improve student achievement. We've talked about that, about the board holding itself accountable in addition to holding administration accountable. Effective school boards have a collaborative relationship with staff and the community and establish a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders in setting and achieving district goals. So I view that as sort of two components of communication, strong internal communication with administration, and we talked about being champions of the vision, being out in the state, having the stakeholders know what we're up to, what we're trying to achieve. Effective boards are data-savvy. They embrace and monitor data even when information is negative and use it to drive continuous improvement. We've talked about using data points on student assessment. How does that look? Effective school boards align and sustain resources such as professional development to meet district goals. That's one thing we haven't talked about. You know, there are lots of professional development opportunities available to board members. MASB does a great job, NASB does a great job. There's only so many hours in a day, but to the extent you can make, make yourself available to, to use those resources, I think those are really, really great. Effective school boards lead as a united team with the superintendent, each from their respective roles, with strong collaboration and mutual trust. I think if I was going to lift one to be the overlay on the whole presentation, that one is probably it. Effective school boards take part in team development and training, sometimes with their superintendents, to build shared knowledge, values, and commitments for their improvement efforts. And so I think, again, that's talking both about internally within the board and with administration. And so, if we're talking about how to do it, if we're talking about how to execute the vision, how to have the goals, how to be successful, all that good stuff, it's the five or six things that are on the slide, and then it's the eight characteristics that we've talked about, and you see a lot of interplay as we talk about all of those things. I am not going to walk through the 16 tenants of effective board superintendent leadership with you. You have the slides. I know it's been a long evening, but they're there. And again, I did them side by side, and, and I think as you peruse those at your leisure, you're going to see just a reinforcement of everything that we've been talking about, right? And so those are in the deck, they're sort of one-to-one as you go through the whole list. Lot of text, we'll skip past that for your, your own perusal at your, at your leisure. And then I think, important to talk about this, and I, I, this is an old MASB graphic as well, but I, I want to talk about something different when I think about this, because if you look at it, so it's got, you know, sort of the chain of command, teacher, principal, superintendent, board, but then we have these citizen concerns that sort of boomerang up to board referral and back. And so when I was, when I was in elementary school, my dad and my grandmother were on the Board of Education at the same time. This is my dad's mother-in-law. They had different politics. It was very, it was fascinating to watch. It was fascinating to watch. Family holidays were really something to behold, and I took a lot of pride knowing that my dad and my grandmother were on the Board of Education. But part of that experience, aside from being proud of them for serving their community, was I learned that if I ran out to the grocery store with my dad to buy a gallon of milk, you know, in the evening, someone would just come up to him and start talking to him about something. And I was, of course, little, wanting to know when we were going to leave and when we were going to get back in the car, but it was a member of the community who just stopped him to ask him about, fill in the blank, right? The bond proposal, about what's happening with the high school swim, swimming team, about what was happening in elementary school. And that was the reality of what we faced as a family, whether I was with my dad or with my grandma. They always got stopped and people talked to them, and they were, to their credit, always very gracious and always spent time, and I didn't understand it at the time because I wanted to get back in the car and go home, but I think it would have been very easy now that I do what I do for a living and I see charts like this, it would have been really easy for my dad or my grandma to say, well, I'll, I'm going to get an answer, I'm going to take care of this for you. I'm going to call the principal, I'm going to call, and they never did that. They always referred them back to the chain of command and trying to address things at the closest point of origin, at least I think that's what I heard. And, and that really is consistent with what MASB talks about. I say that knowing that it can be a difficult construct. I say that knowing that it can be a difficult construct for board members. People find you in the community, they know you're dialed in, they know you have the pleasure of sitting at lots of meetings like this, and darn it, sometimes they just want an answer. And it's very tempting to say, I'll take care of it, or I'll make a phone call, or I'll, and that's, that's human nature. If you didn't care about helping people, if you didn't care about trying to find solutions, you wouldn't be here. But sort of adhering to this notion of, let's get it back, it's a, it's very often going to be an operational issue, almost 99 times out of 100 it will be, let's get that back to the superintendent, let's get it back to the building so they can address it, and they'll deal with it. They will address it. Can you hold them accountable for addressing it? 100%. Should you? Without question. Does there need to be that transparency and that dialogue between administration and the board about how community concerns get addressed? Without doubt, without a doubt. But fight the temptation to, to run with it. Fight the, I don't want to say go rogue because that has political context to it, but to fight the temptation to, to say, I, I got this. Use the system that we have in place, use the framework that we have in place, and that will, that will lead to good outcomes, that will yield good outcomes. My dad never thought I was listening all those times. I was always listening. I was always listening. So what about the board? Sort of governance standards for itself? I promise we're getting towards the end here. Some, some things that we get from the State Board of Education, so sort of another resource. The Board of Ed in cooperation with the superintendent and stakeholders, meaning our community. Establish and commits to a vision for the school district that emphasizes high expectations for achievement of all students and quality instruction. You reach a point in this where you start hearing the same words over and over again, and I think, aside from it maybe sounding redundant, I think that's important because you see consistency from the State Board, from MASB, from NASB, from the Center for Public Ed. They're all saying the same thing about, this is what we see in, in organizations that are successful. The Board of Education governs in a manner that is dignified and worthy of trust. And I guess I'll read the second one, the next, the next one too. The Board of Education is accountable to the school district community. This is a challenge. This is a challenge. I, I won't sit up here and pretend to be a, a social scientist, but what I see at board meetings, and I'm not speaking specific to Bloomfield in any way, but, but what I see at board meetings in the aggregate today or the last couple of years compared to what I saw when I started my career and I was going to board meetings. Yes, I had hair, so it's been a while, okay? It's just a different tenor. There's a different tenor. There's a different tenor amongst, very often from the community, there's a different tenor amongst board members. And I've been asked a lot of times in the last handful of years, well, can't we do something? And, you know, there are limited resources when board members don't operate in a manner that is dignified and worthy of trust. That's the reality of it. There are limited legal levers for, that to be pulled, right? And I won't get into what those are, but they're limited in nature. We are very much operating on a set of norms, a set of expectations, and to a certain extent, hope. Hope that, that those two things that we just read, that someone will be, folks will be dignified and worthy of trust, that they'll be accountable to the school community, that they're going to do those things. And I, and I don't want to let maybe a handful of bad actors, you know, paint the full narrative of what goes on. At the end of the day, and I've said it now two or three times tonight, and I will say it once more, I believe, not only as, as the child and the grandchild of someone who watched their parent and grandparent go to board meetings, you would not be up here if you did not care about this community. And that does not, that does not mean that you will all always agree. That does not mean that you will always have the same perspective on things. That does not mean that it won't be uncomfortable if there's an upset community member about something, but I encourage you, when the winds start blowing and the hail starts coming in and things get really dicey, just remember that, that you are at this table, that the original impetus for you to be at this table was because of how much you cared about this community and wanted to see it be successful. That is something that all of you share, and you will always share that, no matter the weather. And so that's my Dan Campbell speech on that, and then I'll move on. The board holds the superintendent accountable for creating outcomes that are identified in the school plan. I think that's equally as important in making sure that we're holding the superintendent accountable. How do we do that? What's the best way to hold the superintendent accountable? Is it to go on social media and blast him? Probably not. That's what the evaluation is for. That's where, that's the moment where you hold him accountable for what he's done. Does that mean that there's one day of the year where you hold him accountable? Of course not. That's what the dialogue is that goes on throughout the course of the school year, but that's the moment where you want to do that. Last one. We've talked about sort of the board as a whole. How about individual board members? Very bright fuchsia boxes here. The individual school board member is motivated by and focuses on what is in the best interest of all school, all students. The individual school board member believes in the importance of and actively engages in lifelong learning. The individual school board member understands and respects both the authority and responsibilities of the board. And the individual school board member approaches school governance work with a spirit of inquiry. I've sat through some long policy committee meetings. Sometimes it's tough to have a spirit of inquiry about two and a half hours in. I can appreciate that that's a challenge. But, but I, go back to that third box really quick. Understands and respects both the authority and the responsibilities of the board. Probably what overlays all of this is you are a board, and you act as a board. And that doesn't mean that each of you doesn't have your own experiences and your own thoughts and your own opinions, but, but be a board. Be a board and act as a board. And I think if you do that, the organizations that I see that are the most successful, and success is a nebulous term, but we see, we, we see positive outcomes for students, we see positive engagement with community stakeholders, we see meetings that are run in a respectful and productive way, is when we operate as a board. And, and again, that doesn't mean everything's in perfect agreement and perfect harmony at all time, but respecting that role that you each contribute as members of that board. So I think vitally important. With that, I don't know how I did. I did all right. Did all right. What, I know it's a lot of information, and to a certain extent, a lot of terms, a lot of phrases, but my hope is that we sort of cut a little bit through the education speak to the core concepts that I think are vitally important for this to work, and work, again, chiefly for our school community to achieve the vision, achieve the goals that we want to achieve. So with that, I will stop talking for a moment. Are there any questions that I can answer?
With regard to the changing landscape of board dynamics and the way it's evolved, are you seeing any major legislative proposed changes to any of the code or anything like that to address it? Or is this just something, this is just a trend that, you know, is going to be weathered and we'll see how long it lasts?
Yeah, I, I, so the short answer to the question is no.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any sort of legislative fix. What, what I, what I am seeing is a, a real sort of mobilization by groups like MASB to talk about these things. Whereas I think for many years, there was just an assumption that everything would be hunky-dory, happy, everybody getting along and everything was good, and there was just an assumption that that would be the baseline. I see MASB and other national organizations being more intentional about talking about it. And I say that because, you know, I, I have the pleasure of speaking at a lot of these conferences, and they'll say, well, you know, will you do a session on, you know, board member relations, or, you know, what do you do if you've got a, a community member who's really upset with the board and you've got a board member who wants to, you know, shout back at somebody? How do you handle that, right? And so I, I see a lot more effort being poured into talking about it. And I'm, I'm of the firm belief that the only reason why we're being so intentional about that is because everyone recognizes the changing landscape. And, and I want to be really clear. I, I, this is not a, a throw the baby out with the bathwater. This is not to say that all of these public boards are dysfunctional and it's, you know, no, there's a lot of great boards where there's no issues. But when there are situations with a member who is intent on being disruptive, it can be very disruptive, and it can be very frustrating, and it can make you question why I'm giving my time and talent to be here to try to support the school district. And so I don't see a legislative fix, but I do see more dialogue around it. And, and the hope is that if you're, the more we're talking about it, the more we're taking the time, and I, I give a lot of credit to the board and to Rick for saying, hey, can you come and talk about this? There's boards that don't, that don't want to talk about it. They don't want to listen to me talk for an hour about vision and collaboration and all that other good stuff. Let's just get down to business. I do think it's important, because when we stop talking about it, when we stop making it a point of emphasis, then I think we're going to see some real different outcomes. And I don't think they'll be good.
So I have a specific, well, just a general question. It actually happened tonight, and I actually spoke to Rick about this. So, and I, and I've spoken to other board members about this who are, they don't understand the rules. So administrative appointments. So administrative appointment comes to us, we're not really doing, and this is, maybe it's our policy, we're not doing any research behind it. We're kind of just indirectly rubber-stamping an administrative appointment. Now legally, do we, do we as a board have to vote on or approve administrative appointments? Or is that something?
Kevin provided us a legal opinion on this, which is now attorney-client privilege. So we can't, so you're asking him a question that he's given us a written opinion on. It was inserted into the board update on Friday, so very easily could have missed it. There was a lot of stuff in there, but we have a full written legal opinion from him on this point.
So I was going to let Paul finish, and then I was, I was going to say that, is that I, I, it's obviously the board's call, but I, I did provide a legal opinion on that. I know it's, there, there is, and there are, there are, I don't want to get into the opinion, but there are some specific legal components that need to be considered, and there are some options that the board has available to it, and I've outlined those in the opinion letter.
And it's my hope that we can discuss that in February. The, the approach we want to take to that.
Yeah, I missed, I, I didn't realize, I figured you were here and asked.
No, and I, I appreciate the question, and I, I promise you, I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not trying to dodge it, but, but because it's, it's in the opinion letter, the privilege is not mine to abrogate, so.
Without answering the question, the point is, is, you know, as board members, not going to this, you know, we vote on things that we're, you know, educated on, have dialogue and have this, you know, discussion. So that's why, you know, I bring up the question. Not that I'm questioning any administrative appointments, I'm just like, if that's our diligence is to vote on and getting information in advance and having dialogue before we vote on things. So the question is, and then, and I'll read the opinion, is, do we need to? And if, and if the answer is yes, and in legal opinion, then we need to have a discussion in February whether or not we want to, and have discussion before we vote on something so it doesn't look like we're just rubber-stamping something.
Yeah.
That's the point.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a very good and very important question, and I'm, I'm anxious to hear what the board thinks after you review the opinion and let me know, based on that. Thanks for your question.
That's all I have.
That's interesting. Hmm, I'm gonna, I'm not going to elaborate on that.
Something, because we use, in this, and I think sometimes it's used interchangeably, mission, vision, goal, policy, regulation. There seems to be, in my mind, they have different meanings. They seem to be used interchangeably in some contexts, except for maybe policy and regulation, where there's that demarcation between the specificity that belongs to the superintendent and the policies that belong to the board. But even then, there seems to be no clear demarcation. And then, mission, vision, goal, policy also seems to be mushed together, perhaps intentionally, perhaps unintentionally. And I, I'm wondering if there's a, a demarcation that, that you have, that you recommend, or that MASB recommends, because I haven't yet gotten on to their, their training site, but wondering what your thoughts are.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. I, I would sort of create two buckets. I, I would go a mission, vision, goal, kind of over here, and then policy, regulation, protocol, procedure, whatever, over here. I, I view those items, policy, regulation, procedure, more as governance, right? A, a written instrument that we look to for guidance, and again, I've sort of, as you mentioned, delineated between policy and, and regulation. On the other bucket, vision, mission, goal, I think you're right that everyone might have a different feeling on that. You know, some districts talk about the vision, some have a vision and a mission statement, some just have a mission statement, some want to put their vision statement in their policy. It's a little bit of a, a grab bag, and so I won't speak for MASB or NASB. My guess is that it's probably, a lot of their terms are intentionally vague, because different organizations will use different terms. I think, you know, for my money, vision and mission are big picture stuff, like what do we want to be? Goals are more action-oriented, right? At least that's the way, if you ask me to break it down, how I would think about it. You know, policy and regulation might be some of the things that help you achieve the executable that's in the goal. But those would be the buckets I would break them into, but I, I wouldn't be overly beholden to whatever phraseology is used in the materials, because I think they're probably being intentionally vague.
And to the, in your experience, do the policies usually flow from mission, vision, goal? And I ask because I, I know, like, looking at both today and previously, looking at the Bloomfield site, we have your policies on there, and I wasn't sure if those are standard policies that you recommend all districts to adopt, or if there are different versions of the different policy elements that you can utilize to match whatever mission, vision, goals the district adopts.
Yeah, great question. So let me unpack it. So we, we have a standard set of policies, but we have never said, okay, here's the manual, put your logo on it and call it a day. We went through, at, with the board at the time, a, I don't want to use the word arduous because that sounds negative. We went through a detailed process of reviewing every policy that the district had at the time, and what the proposed changes were, and were there things that we wanted to add, subtract, modify, so on and so forth. So at the end of the day, while, while our policy process is to start with a baseline, the final product is uniquely Bloomfield, uniquely Troy, uniquely, you know, Lake Orion, whatever, okay? Is every policy in the manual going to flow from vision and mission? No. There are certain things that you just have to have to be legally compliant. There are certain things operationally that you're just going to have to deal with because you're going to encounter them that have maybe some tangential connection to mission and vision, but they're not going to be a direct link, right? Do I think that there are policies that you then want to look at because you're really focused on mission and vision, and in order to achieve that, we know we need to have a resource down here to help that? Absolutely. So there will be some that I would say, oh yeah, we, we needed to create that to, to make sure we're executing the vision, but it's not, it's not a one-to-one.
Is there some kind of database of, say, for example, you have one policy element, and you might want to consider four different variations of it? Is there something where we can kind of, and I ask because we're barking in our strategic planning and all the elements that flow through that, and I, I like the policies that you have, I'm just wondering if, like, there's like a choice? You could say, okay, there are these six different policies that we've used, that other districts have used, and are best practices. You can pick, like, one of 10 or create your own, just so that we have that as a, a resource?
As exciting and fun as that sounds, short answer is, is no, but I'll put, I'll put an asterisk on it. I think anytime that, and we, we have the privilege of working with lots of districts on policy, anytime a district has come and said, hey, you know, we're, we're cool with this, but we're kind of thinking about it from a different perspective, or we think maybe we want to modify this to try to achieve something different. Have you done that in the other place? Or is that something that you could maybe craft something for us to take a look at? That, those types of conversations happen with some degree of regularity. And so being responsive to those needs that the board might have is something that we're committed to doing. But I, I can't say that I've got a database of sort of choose-your-own-adventure, you know, by policy. We, we, there are, there are slight deviations, there have not been a whole throw-the-baby-out-with-the-bath-water. We've got, most of our policy clients are pretty consistent, but again, there's nuance from district to district because they've, they've, they've altered them or modified them to be consistent with what they want. So I would say that if there are policies that as you are barking on strategic planning, if you're talking about vision, if you're talking about mission, and you're looking at specific policies and saying, yeah, this is cool, but what I'd really like to see is maybe this and this. I'd love to be, I'd love to partner with the board, partner with administration to look at what those options might be. I, my, my sort of joking, half-joking, half-serious comment is, as long as it's not illegal, I'm I'm generally going to be in favor of it. But we want to make sure that we have alignment as well, because when we really start drilling down, this is a conversation for another night, but really start drilling down on governance. So often what we see is policy gets created in a vacuum, regs get committed, created in a vacuum, code gets created in a vacuum, and everybody that was working on those things was doing so with their best intentions and trying to do the best thing for the district, but there's no alignment. And so all of a sudden, we have three or four governance documents that don't say the same thing. That's a problem. And so my mind would always be on what helps the district meet its goals and, or objectives, and it, do, are we still going to have alignment across our documents if we do it? But happy to participate, facilitate, support in any way we can.
And just to add, they do a nice job. Their semi-annual updates at least, I think, where they're constantly in the market, if you will, with experiences that their clients are asking them for updates. Additionally, we would get the legal opinion on any, any policy we would desire to have through them, just to make sure there's legal compliance within the state code or within the school code as well. So we're well serviced by Miller Johnson in, in this area. And they do, although it's not a database, he has quite a bit of experience in the industry with ideas around any given issue.
No, I mean, I was going to say, I've seen things come through where, when we're asked to give feedback in terms of, here's the potential policy as suggested, and then, you know, I've asked questions where I've said, well, what do others' districts do? What about this? What about the? And so from that perspective, we can get feedback to sort of decide what we want. Ultimately, it's our responsibility, and so it's not, sometimes, at least when I first got into it, I was like, oh, are we just going to just take this and move it? But no, I mean, we want to make sure it's ours and own it. Strategic planning is going to be the perfect place for all that, because we haven't, we haven't done a lot of proactive policymaking. It's been reactionary if we've done any. So I think this is the time where it's going to be more, more proactive. There'll be a lot more work behind that, I think.
Maybe it's who you're referring to. I've been here too long, but we've been, five years ago, I think it was five years ago, we did a complete overhaul of our policy and regulations, where maybe that's what you're referring to. We met for over six, yeah, painful, whatever you want to call it, six months to a year was painful.
Detailed, detailed.
It was detailed. And you know who was on the Board at the time, so it was very detailed. You know, like going through all, you know, everything and rehauling it, regulations, policies. So, so we've done that. And the only thing that I don't think was in your deck, this has not been an issue with this Board, it's been an issue with prior Boards, it always comes up, is the, the essence of the Open Meetings Act, right? So, you know, communications, and I think, and you could just articulate it, you know, especially to our new Board members and even current Board members, it's the art of when you're communicating back and forth, especially in email and text, because that's how, you know, when things happen with snow days, you know, but it's the, the act of deliberating that causes the Open Meeting Act.
Yeah.
So it's not the act of like Rick saying, you know, no snow day, you know, Tarek says, my son's pissed off at you, you know, and so that's.
I don't think that's ever going to happen, Paul, ever.
Son, not you. You know, so that's not deliberating on anything. So that's, that's, that's the notion when people are questioning, it's an Open Meeting Act, we're just communicating. It's just if we're deliberating, if there's something in an email that looks like the form of deliberation, that's when an Open Meetings Act violation comes in.
Yeah, no, that's, that's really well said, Paul, and, and I don't think you've been here too long, you're just, you're the voice of reason. I, I.
He's our wise owl.
That's right. Paul, Paul's right.
Been called worse than him, Al.
The key, see, it's okay, it's okay to laugh. The, the, the key word, as Paul said, is deliberation, right? And so what we started getting in the early days of email, what we started getting in the early days of text messages, everybody was replying all, everybody was sending all of their thoughts, well, I think we should do this, and I think we should do that, when, when it, when it could be reasonably concluded that the Board is deliberating towards a decision. And by the way, that doesn't always necessarily feel that way, and it's not a red flashing light that we're deliberating, but if you're furthering the discussion, if you're eliminating possibilities, if you're narrowing the scope of options, that's deliberation. And so those are the things that the Open Meetings Act intends to happen in, in the full sunlight of public, of the public, at a public meeting, properly convened. You are correct, that does not mean that you can't get a text message that says, snow day, and you all say, yay, I can stay in my pajamas. That's not deliberation, right? But, but you will see some Boards get almost draconian in their operating protocols because they're scared, right? Because it's very tempting to hit reply all and say, well, I don't think we should do that. Well, and again, no one has a malicious intent, but all of a sudden, eek, we've just walked into an Open Meetings Act violation. And so I would, I would, as a general rule of thumb, don't hit reply all. As a general rule of thumb, there shouldn't be a massive text exchange that everybody's texting about. Those are going to be fodder for, for, for O M A violations, and that's what we want to avoid. If we're deliberating, if we're conducting Board business, we should be conducting it in the full light of disclosure.
I mean, our texting for the, you know, community who's still watching, all two of them, but it's really just for communication, you know, to us, and, and that's really what it is.
Yeah, that's why I's are okay. I mean, it's the same thing, you know, y, y, you all can go out to dinner together, like, you know, around the holiday, or just in the middle of the year if you feel like it. You, that's not, you're not deliberating on anything unless maybe it's like, how are the Tigers going to be any good this year? That's okay. That's not a violation of the Open.
The act of physically being together is not a violation.
The act of physically being together, the act of talking about your kids or the spring recital, or how many weekends you got to be gone for hockey or whatever, that's not deliberation, and that's okay. That's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you all get together at, you know, Pine Knob on the lawn and you start talking about the budget, that's a problem, right? Because that's, find a better concert to watch if that happens, but, but that's still, that's, could be deliberation. And so that's, I'm sort of being cheeky about it, but that's, that's the difference, right? So just be really cautious, and I think as Paul says, with the electronic communications.
My concern with, because I've done O M A for, I've advised cities and things like that on O M A as well. Deliberation is, is a tough term to define, because it could be simply normative, saying, that's a good idea. Well, that's part of a deliberative process.
Well, I, I, I agree with you 100% that it's, it's hard to define, and, and the, you could take a situation and you could give a full-throated defense that it's not deliberation. The problem is, someone can give a full-throated defense that it is deliberation, and I don't know how that's going to turn out. I would love it for always to not be deliberation, but you just don't know. And so you want to try to avoid the situation where someone's at least even calling into question what it might be. And so just proceed with caution.
It depends.
It depends. We love that answer. Yeah. Deliberation a little harder to note when you see it, like some other things.
While you're here, and this is a little bit off the specific topic, with the, I don't know if we call it withdrawal, vacator of the Title IX vital rules, is something coming out from Miller Johnson on that at some point?
Yeah, so we did a vacator, which if you pretend you went to law school and knew what vacator was, you're lying. You had to look it up the day the decision came out. We did push an update out to our policy clients immediately, the day after the decision came out, indicating that we thought there would still be some legal wrangling in the weeks that followed. And, but, but for all intents and purposes, the, the Biden 2024 Title IX regulations were, were dead. Were not going to be enforced, are they, were they technically ever on the books? I guess that's a question about the scope of vacator that I'm not going to lose myself in. But I, I think from a practical standpoint, we have advised clients that you should assume that the 2020 rules are in effect, that if you have incidents that arise, you should use the 2020 rules. We are going back. I mean, most districts don't have to dust them off because they've only been off the regulations for a few months now. The Biden rules took effect in, on August 1st, so in essence, we're going back to pre-August 1st. But we're going back now and looking at our 2020 rules and all of the updates that we did in the three and a half years after they took effect to make sure we're good. I'm, with all of the respect and admiration for the administration, they're pumping out guidance and EOs faster than, you know, Ford can pump out cars. So we're trying to track what, what, what's happening and what they're declaring and what's changing. And so I'm hesitant to say, here it is, and everybody put it in place. If we unfortunately have Title IX situations that arise, we're going to have to look at the date of the alleged incident. I think almost in all circumstances, we're going to be using those 2020 rules. But we anticipate putting out a comprehensive policy update in February that's going to address a lot of things, including sort of 2020 rules revisited and revamped based on the, the full scope of authority that's out there at the time. But to say it's been a little bit of the field, the full, the goalpost moving, it's a fair statement, yeah.
Thank you.
So we have a pulse on both what's happening federally and at the state level, because our state legislature has changed as well. So we, in connection with not only our legal team, but with collaboration through our state organizations, are, are becoming more educated daily on those impacts. And so there, there are significant changes, as he alluded to, that are, are coming, and we have to make sure that we're prepared for administering them effectively.
Well, and, and candidly, you know, some of the challenges, you can read an EO and say, okay, well, the EO said this. Well, that EO is very likely going to be subjected to legal challenge, and I don't, I don't know how it turns out until it turns out, right? And so, you know, there, there, there's always, there's particularly in sort of the modern presidential era, we're sort of used to this pattern of a whole bunch of EOs right at the outset, and then you got to kind of let the dust die, die down a little bit before you figure out exactly what to do. And so Rick's right that, that there are some state components to this and changes to state law that would impact Title IX allegations as well. So we're, we're, we're on it, and every day is interesting. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.